I still got three teams. I need one of them to win. If they win more than one, I start.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the, I think, March 26th Planning Board meeting. I'll read our agenda. It's seven o'clock, or 7:08. We'll begin the public hearing on zoning articles to rezone certain parcels of land at 90 Maple Street that from RB to EA and to approve preliminary development plan for the property pursuant to Section 5.6.3. At eight o'clock, A and R, 18 Prospect Street, a strip of land being carved off this property in order to convey it to the butter. Eight fifteen, housing production plan, discussion of how Sherburne might be able to prepare one. At eight thirty, town meeting, planning for presentation of warrant articles. Eight forty-five, master plan survey, update on process. Eight fifty-five, town center report, continued discussion about next steps and additional financial information, consideration of potential recommendations. Nine, nine PM, other business that may come before the board and minutes. I'll make a comment about the agenda and then take a motion to approve that, that it may be that the public hearing will take a little longer. And so if you're here for the other, the other agenda items, maybe be prepared for them to be an hour or so later. So with that amendment, is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move. Any second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. So, let's see. So this meeting is being televised and will be available on cable TV and be available on the Internet. Assistive hearing is available. It's in the back of the room on my left. And because everyone is here and in our viewing audience all want to hear what's being said, I'll remind everyone to come to the microphone, state your name and address. Because this is a continuation of the hearing from February 26th, we have a limited amount of time and want to let everyone have a chance to speak. I'll ask everyone who does want to speak to add something new to the topic, try to remember what was said in the first hearing, meeting, and defer to those who haven't spoken and had a chance to speak yet. So, and also don't repeat what's been already said. With our limited time, we want to make sure everybody has a chance to contribute. I'll ask the developer of 90 Maple Street, Mark from Polty Corporation Company, and I'll ask him to describe any changes to their proposal since we last met and allow the planning board to deliberate and invite public comment. I'll remind my fellow board members to speak up, although I've been told not to speak too close to the microphone. And have one conversation at a time. When folks in the audience are recognized, please come to the microphone in the middle of the room, state your name and address, direct your question to the board. We have a lot of ground to cover. When I was coming, I want to thank everybody. I really want to thank everybody, the public, Polty Company, and my fellow board members for their time and contribution to this productive discussion. This isn't always easy, and I think everybody's given it very serious thought, so your contribution to this process, I just really appreciate it. It's a great process. The process of rezoning from RB to RE, to EA, from Residence B, which is two-acre zoning, to Elder and Affordable. And the proposed preliminary development plan, advisory had their hearing on this proposal a few days ago. Planning Board will complete our hearing and then goes to town meeting for vote. If it passes town meeting with two-thirds vote, two-thirds of the vote or more, then it comes back to the planning board for the final details and a final development plan for discussion in a similar hearing. So we've got a, if it passes all that, it comes back here for a similar rigorous hearing. If the planning board approves a special permit application in the final development plan, then the developer can begin the project in accordance with that final development plan. Alternatives to this plan, this preliminary development plan that we're talking about in this hearing are related, but they're not the purpose of this hearing. Alternatives are not the purpose of this hearing. So we've got to really stay focused on the warrant article and the specific criteria of the preliminary development plan and the rezoning. So that's our focus. Our job as the planning board is to have an opinion and report to the town, for the town meeting. Let's see. A comment was made at our last meeting to review some of the, the list of concerns and things, and I want to do that. And then I'm going to ask Mark to update us on, on changes and things. When I did review the, the list of concerns and questions relative to the preliminary development plan criteria, some of the things aren't directly related or aren't related. But those that are in some way related, I thought that we have talked about, so reviewing the, the tax revenue. Our job is to review the, the prices of the, of these proposed units relative to, to the tax revenue and the net cost and things. Those are certainly interesting and they're important, but in our criteria for the preliminary development plan, they're not directly related. Does the town benefit from non-school age children? It's certainly related. It certainly affects how people will view this at town meeting, but relative to its criteria as a preliminary development plan, it's not directly related. That the town has right of first refusal, there could be a 40B, those sort of things not, not part of the preliminary development plan criteria. So as I said, alternatives, alternative designs and things like that are not, not part of our responsibility for making a decision on the preliminary development plan criteria. We did talk about emergency access and different alternatives, and I understand Mark has an update. There were a lot of recommendations related specifically to the McGregor access, so those things are, are important. The impact on wells, the impact on a butter property value, noise, lighting, the, the safety of the intersection to drive, to Maple, the impact on traffic, the trail plan, the connection to the town center. Let's see here. The risk of, the risk of the development not being developed or falling into hardship in, I guess, not being developed. I'm just reading some of these. The risk of later expansion of rooms or changing the floor plan or the number of bedrooms, building quality where the town does have a stretch code, aesthetic lighting, and I think, well, the lack of amenities. And I think that's, that's the list. So where we've already discussed those adequately, I think I want to, again, I'll refer, I'll turn this over to Mark for his updates and then ask the board to deliberate on, on issues that have not been discussed, so we can kind of go through the, the zoning bylaw as a checklist to see what we haven't discussed and what, what we need to. So, Mark?
Thanks, John. I also was told not to speak so close to the mic.
Yeah.
For the record, it's, my name's Mark Mastriani. I'm here on behalf of Polty Homes of New England, who's a proposed developer of the senior housing development at 90 Maple Street. And I have Reed Blue with me from Polty Homes as well. Just to kind of recap what, what John just described, the reason why we're here tonight is we do have a warrant article. Warrant, I think it's article number 32, for the town to approve a rezoning at the town meeting from Residence B to Residence EA Zone. And for the town to approve the rezoning, that would allow a senior housing community development to be built at 90 Maple Street. Without, without that rezoning, a senior housing community cannot be built at this location. So we are going before town meeting. This is, this is a step in the process for, for that, and we appreciate any and all support. It's quite an undertaking to get two-thirds support that we need at town meeting. So as John mentioned, this is a continuation of the preliminary, of the hearing that was open last month. Previously, you received a preliminary development plan, which is a requirement of the, of the rezoning, pre-zeroning, which was dated February 24th. It was a comprehensive packet. And since that time, we've submitted a, some updated exhibits with a cover letter describing some of the changes that we've made based on comments that we've heard at prior presentations and prior board meetings. So that's what I'd like to walk you through tonight, the updated exhibits and the, and the packet that we've submitted to you tonight. It was emailed to you, Gino, today, and hard copies have been provided for you. So the first change, and so I'll, I'll speak to this, to PowerPoint presentation that's up, up here on the screen. So the first change is just the cover sheet, which recognizes that there's revised sheets, revised through March 24th. This is a table of contents of the, of the exhibits, plans, information. That's part of the preliminary development plan. And the changes here are that it shows the, the exhibits that have, that have all been updated, so it's, it's clear that there are the previous submittal. And then where things have changed, it's, it's recognized for you here. And we've also added in one additional exhibit, and it's a site location exhibit. This is an updated aerial site plan. The changes here is that we've, we've incorporated in the center, center of the site, a small gathering center. It's a community center to be part of the private, private condominium. It's a place for the homeowners to gather, to organize activities. It would be a place to get together in the, in the winter months. I know that's been a concern of the board for some time. And what we're envisioning here, it's a modest in size. It would have, it would have a, a community room. It would have a room with a kitchenette and a bathroom facilities. The other, the other change to this plan is we've added in a, in a note, note number six, where we've, we've made a commitment at prior meetings, and since this preliminary development plan goes along with the rezoning, you know, we've added no permanent residents under the age of 18 to, to the age restriction. So stepping back, this is a senior housing community, and with a senior housing community, it requires one person to be aged 55 years of age or older to occupy the unit. And, and my company's committing to go further with that requirement and to say that senior housing units here require occupancy by one person aged 55 or older, and no permanent residents will be under the age of 18. So by making that extra commitment, we're hoping that helps put the, the issue of the school kids to bed. And the, another additional note that we've added here is a commitment, note number eight, is a commitment or a contribution of $66,000 to the town, which can be used for miscellaneous downtown enhancements or sidewalk trail improvements. And our thought there is that there's been some discussion that although our, our property complies with the one-mile requirement of the zoning, that it is on the outer limits of the, of the zoning requirement of one mile. So this, this money could be used by the town for downtown enhancements, which would link our, our community to the, to the downtown. And then some of these exhibits like this one, it just, it's changed because it, it shows the, the gathering area, so we, we included it in the, in the package. This is the emergency access alternative. This has been another important topic that's been discussed for a while. And the, the major change here is that we've removed, there previously was three alternatives for emergency access for this community, and we've now removed what was previously called Alternative A, which was an emergency access drive that went out to McGregor Drive. So that was an alternative that involved some complications, some crossing town-owned open space land and some conservation land. And based on the process that we've gone through and feedback that we got from the Conservation Commission, it just didn't, didn't feel like that was appropriate for, to move forward with that alternative any longer. So we have, so this exhibit is, is an updated exhibit showing the emergency access drive locations for this community and to clarify emergency access means gated, emergency access only, gravel or some type of impervious surface that would be suitable for the, for the fire and police departments. It would not be used as a main throughway, accessway for, for town residents or for, for residents of this community, for this development. So what we have left are, we have two alternatives. One would connect out to Wildwood Drive, and we've revised it to, to go all the way to the cul-de-sac at the end, which has been a, which has been desired by the fire department. And alternative, the other alternative is off of Maple Street, utilizing some existing farm roads, cart paths that have been there for generations. And what we've done is we've extended it actually, utilizing an existing trail that's there. It would have to be obviously improved, but we've extended it to within 600 feet of the cul-de-sac, which, which meets your subdivision rules and regs. So we, we've had a discussion with the fire chief about that, and that seemed acceptable. That seemed to be an acceptable approach. So we do have two emergency access drive alternatives that we, that we're moving forward These, these exhibits here are shockingly bright, but they just are, they're included because of, again, the gathering center that we've included in the middle is showing up on all the plans. Same with the trail plan. Nothing has changed there. We're still committing to the trails. And then we have a grading exhibit, which is part of the preliminary development plan. And the one change there is we've, we've modified our, the retaining wall, the one retaining wall on site. We've regraded it and, and reworked the grades at the maximum height of the retaining wall at its maximum height is, is 12 feet. So it's really not as high as it used to be. Then this unit mix breakdown table, it was brought up to us that our footnotes weren't referencing the right note, so we've corrected the, the typos that were on this. Nothing else has changed. This is a site location exhibit that the board has been asking for. It's a requirement of the, of the EA Zone, that the, that the development parcel be within one mile of, of the intersection of Washington Street and Main Street. So this, this location exhibit shows that our site is, is within one mile of the, of the intersection. This is the fiscal benefit. No cheat, showing the fiscal benefits to the town. And again, for redundancy and duplication, we've, we've added the note in here, that zero additional cost to the school system, and we've added in that no permanent residents under the age of 18 would be a requirement of this project. So we added that back in there. And then the last time I made the present, presentation, I realized I had a duplication on the architecture, so I wasn't showing one of the, one of the home styles. So I've corrected that in the upper right-hand corner, and we're now showing a sample of what a Martin Ray, what we're calling a Martin Ray would look like. Other than that, we have not made other changes to the preliminary development plan. So with that, I'd open it up to the, to the board for comments.
Thank you, Mark. Comments?
I had a relatively minor question. It's probably more appropriate here than any other time. Your rendering on the front shows a gazebo, and I don't see that in the aerial plan. I understand these are...
I can answer that. On the preliminary development plan, there was a, we had engaged a landscape architect that we brought in for a few meetings, and he prepared, he prepared some exhibits for us that were in the original preliminary development plan.
Where would be on the aerial site plan? Is it down at the cul-de-sac?
So let me, let me just pull up the exhibit, and then I can answer that clearly. So, okay. The gazebo, so this, this feature right here is a park area that we've created for the enjoyment of our, our residents. And kind of in the, in the center and in the top, top area, right, right there, it's, we've proposed a gazebo. It would, it would be surrounded by some, you know, walking paths and, and landscaping.
We have no idea where you're talking.
Where you hit the red dot, the laser pointer?
Yeah. Right there. That's a, that's a park that was created.
Mark, I had a couple of questions I just want to make sure I'm clear on. The, one thing is on the trails. And in this, this exhibit, the trails, I think it clearly shows the trails that you plan or to keep or modify or add. Is it stated that they are to be open to the public? If not, could that please be part of the, could it be specified?
They are open to, they will, are proposed to be open to the public, for sure.
By what access?
So does it say? I know it says it on some of our, our benefit tables where we list the benefits of the project, and it's the continued enjoyment of the trails to be, to be open to the public. But we could certainly add that note to this plan to make it absolutely clear that that's our intention.
Great. That'd be great.
Mark, could you clarify for me exactly what will be the status of the land which is not built on, which is left? Will it be under some kind of conservation?
Yeah. So, so in your, in your zoning, it, it talks about the open space that's required by the, by the development, and it's really open for discussion between us and, and your board and probably the Board of Selectmen, or, and maybe the Conservation Commission, really what the town wants to do with it. It could go a number of different ways. It could remain in the ownership of the condominium. It could be, it could be donated to the town, for sure. And it could also be, it could be put into a conservation restriction or under the care of like a nonprofit conservation trust. So there's a variety of different ways you can go about it. It's just a matter of the town's preference. I think we would be open to working that out with, with your board and with the town.
That could be determined during the special permit?
Absolutely.
Process?
But it would, it would be under a restriction, or if it's given to the town, there's no need for a restriction because it, it would be the town's.
Mark, I just had a follow-up on that. The average sale price is approximately $650,000. And of that, what, what amount approximately would be land value?
So the, the value of, of the homes incorporates the land, so it's, it doesn't, I'm, I'm not sure I can answer that question, but it's, it's the appraised value of the home or the, or the value, market value of the home.
Well, the reason why I ask is the, the revenue stream affected if, in fact, the, a portion of the property is donated to the town?
I don't, I don't think that would affect the, the value of the homes here, whether it's, whether the open space is owned by the, the association or the open space is owned by the town. It's still, you still live in a home that's surrounded by open space.
No, I understand that, but if the, if the revenue stream is based on taxes and it includes the entire site and the value of the entire site, wouldn't that be affected?
No, not in my experience.
If a proportion of the property was owned by the town?
No.
Well, well, I mean, our, you know, our assessors listing, they list the building with a value and the property with a value for each individual.
So this would be different because it's a condominium? So once you, once you build the first home and you, and you create the condominium association, the land is condominiumized and you, and there's no, you don't tax the value of the land, you only tax the units that are part of the condominium. And the value of the units take into account its surroundings.
So, so the revenue stream is, is simply based on the value of the buildings?
Correct.
To follow up on John's comment about the trails being, the commitment to the trails be open to the public, as you know, one of our, members of our Board of Selectmen has pointed out the need to memorialize these commitments. Either, well, probably in a developer, separate development agreement down the road, but also any of these commitments, I, in my view, should be in the PDP that's going to be presented to the town. So not only, it's probably belts and suspenders to have them in the developer's agreement as well, but I think those need to be spelled out so that 10 years from now, any confusion can be dealt with by looking at, at the contract and the, the specific terms of the PDP and the, and then final development plan, too.
So we've tried to incorporate everything into the PDP and that, you know, for us, that is our, our contract with the rezon, that goes along with the rezoning. So, but, but I know, I know that the selectman had mentioned that at the, at Monday's meeting, so we probably, you know, we will be following up on that. But, you know, for all intents and purposes and under the requirements of the rezoning, you know, this is our, this is our commitment. But just stepping back, I want to make sure I didn't mislead anybody because I have read here. Did I answer the condominium question correctly? Or is there anything else you would want to add? Because I don't want to mislead anybody.
Yeah. Please read.
So I, I think that, I think that Mark was correct. However, if, that he was correct, his explanation that as a condominium, the land is all transferred into the condominium as a, as a common ownership, whether it's 88 acres in the case of the entirety of the proposal or whether it's...
I'm sorry. Reed, can you get a little bit closer?
Just say one of the chairs.
Some, some lesser number. But if it's, if it's simpler and cleaner and easier for, for understanding purposes, our proposal will be for the condominium to retain all of the land. We can keep it that way. That simplifies it from your point. Although I just want to make, make it clear, as Mark did, that we're open to discussing other ownerships. But I think the key is the open space is going to be retained as open space in perpetuity. It can't be further developed. There'll be a restriction on it of one type or another. Our plan initially, if there's no other interest from other entities, town, Conservation Commission, nonprofit, of owning some of the land, which we're willing to discuss, but if that doesn't turn out, our proposal, if you will, is for the condominium association to own all the property. In that case, the, the value of the homes, whatever they may be, whatever they sell for when they transfer... for when they transfer, a percentage of that is, is taken as, we understand it with the town's assessor, approximately 95% of the market value is the assessed value for tax purposes and that's the, and that'll be the amount that the property taxes are based on, the revenue stream is based on and our calculations. So the ownership of the land doesn't really factor into the value of, of the homes when they're sold because the area around it is restricted, it's open space in perpetuity. So it's a little different than an individual home because I do realize that an individual home, if you own two and a half acres or four and a half acres or some number, there's an allocation on, on your tax bill for buildings and land and you come up with a total.
Right. And I add, I ask that simply so that, that people would understand the assumptions that are included within that revenue stream. And I, and I think if I'm understanding you correctly, that what you're saying is that the value of land, of the land is essentially a minimal value under the condominium association plan that you have here.
That's right, yeah.
You're placing a minimal value on that land is what you're doing.
The land itself has minimal value. I, I'm not going to say it's zero, but it's really an assessor's question, but it's, it's incorporated into the value of the homes when they transfer.
And as a result, it would be, it would have a minimal impact on the revenue stream as, as you have projected it?
The land would, yes.
So, so I guess part of this is an assessor's question to, to be sure that that's the way it would work in Sherburne. The, the sale value, the initial sale of a condo related, how's that related to the long-term assessment and the annual taxes paid? I guess, or we need to be real clear on that. But, but what I hear is at this point, if we, if nothing else, it would, it would be part of the condo association if, if, if we don't agree on, mutually agree on some alternative ownership. And I presume we wouldn't mutually agree if it would reduce the tax revenue.
Is it possible to guarantee in perpetuity the open space and still retain it within the condominium?
Yes. You would, we would put a conservation restriction on it.
So conservation restriction can, can be on condominium, condominium-owned land?
It would have to be held by, by somebody. So for instance, we would work with the Conservation Commission who would take, take control of the, of the conservation, or some other entity.
The Conservation Commission or one of the local land trusts?
Rural land trust or something like that.
Could hold the conservation restriction, but the ownership would stay with the condominium?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And to Chuck's point about, about being clear, what we just said, it's a matter of public record, but I'd like to see it in writing as a...
For the open space?
Yeah.
Restriction?
Yeah.
Well, and I would like the, the revenue stream projections that has been presented to reflect the, how the figures are arrived at, taking into account the value of the buildings versus the value of the land because it may assist the town or the Board of Selectmen in determining whether it should be held by the condominium association or a portion donated to the town or maintained by the town or some other, some other option, okay?
I know there's other comments, I want to finish the deliberation and we'll open it So are we, John, are you satisfied? Do you have any other?
I, I think I've addressed that aspect of it fairly completely. Thank you.
Good. Let me shift gears. The retaining wall. I don't know what, what slide is best, but my question was just, can you describe roughly the, the length of the wall? I imagine it'll be determined as you, as you build it, but...
Well, well, the, the length of the wall is, would be roughly as shown, so, so for, for everybody looking up the screen, the wall is right up here in this corner. I, I guess it's the western corner of the property, which if I go to the site plan, so it's, it's right here. Along this property line. I guess the red dot's not showing up in the audience?
Is it possible to measure the length of the wall?
Yeah, right there.
What is the length of the wall?
Great. So, hold on. Looks like the length, total length of the wall is about 200 feet. Yeah, and, and so a good point is the highest point of the wall, we project about 12 feet the way it's created and that's at the highest point of the wall. So as, as the grades catch up and it feathers down both ways, it eventually goes to zero, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And what would, Mark, if I could ask, what was the original height of the retaining wall? Original proposed height?
Yeah, it was upwards over 20 feet.
Okay.
And if I recall correctly, I don't think the length has changed. I think you'd indicated in one of our earlier meetings that it was approximately 200 feet long.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall. I just, yeah.
Okay. Other questions or I'll open it up?
Are we going to go through the elements of the 5.6, the preliminary development plan approval? I, I know that we've got a checklist. I've got a number of other comments, but I don't know if I, it probably would be easier to deal with in terms of the specific elements. What's your pleasure in terms of the scheduling?
You mean in terms of the sequence?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's go through the, let's go through the sequence then.
Okay.
So, so I can read the, I can read the, I won't read the whole bylaw, but I'll, I'll read the purpose and then the preliminary development plan 5.6.3. So the purposes of the residency A district are to provide for the demonstrated elderly housing needs of the town by making provision for appropriately located, specially designed and reasonably priced housing for occupancy by elderly persons who otherwise would not have such housing opportunities within the town to allow greater flexibility in land use, planning for the development of tracts of land in terms of density, preservation of open space, utilization of natural features, provision of municipal services and provision of a variety of housing types to ensure that the site development plans will be presented to the town meeting in connection with a proposal to rezone attractive land to residents EA district and to enable the planning board to require adherence to such site development plans and the granting of a special permit as here and after described. So 5.6.3 is the town meeting presentation preliminary development plan. Every proposal for the rezoning of the land to residents EA district classification must be presented to the town, to a town meeting for two-thirds vote in accordance with chapter 48 of the general laws. The initial proposal submitted to the Board of Selectmen for inclusion of the town warrant need only include a description of the land proposed for rezoning and a brief description of the proposed project, but every proposal must include a preliminary development plan when it is presented at the planning board hearing required by such, by said chapter 48 prior to the town meeting. That's what we're doing here. And, and later as the plan may be amended after the public hearing at the town meeting. In addition to the requirements imposed by the rules and regulations of the Sherburne Planning Board adopted pursuant to chapter 48, the preliminary development plan shall show in a general manner but drawn to scale the boundaries and topography of the parcel. And Chuck, do you want to just kind of stop at each one or do you want to review the whole thing and then try to follow that sequence?
What I would suggest is that if any member of the planning board has a question about any of those, you have to put a hold and discuss it at that point either way.
Okay. So we, we good with that, board? So, shown in general manner but drawn to scale the boundaries and topography of the parcel, the wetlands, ponds, streams or waterways within or adjacent to the land, proposed location, bulk, types, architectural character and typical floor plans for all the buildings or structures, the proposed locations, design and dimensions of all streets, walks, parking and other paved areas, the proposed grading plan, drainage plan and location of major utilities, wells, septic systems. And I wanted to, I want to talk about wells. And septic systems and the proposed open space. I think we've just talked about the open space. The preliminary development plan shall also include either on the plans or in other documentary form, the name and address of the record owner, the proposed dwelling unit density, the total floor area. I just want to clarify that. I have a question about floor area. Proposed rents or sale prices and other information concerning the...
I'd like to talk a little bit more about sale prices.
All right. And other information concerning the purposes and nature of the proposed project, which the proponent believes will assist the planning board and town voters in their deliberation. The planning board in its report to the town meeting required by law shall include its opinion on whether or not the proponent has prepared and presented sufficient data to give reasonable assurance that the development will conform to the preliminary development plan with respect to the location, layout and design of proposed buildings, drives and streets, to the density, type and design of floor plans and dwelling units and to any other material which the proponent has submitted with his proposal. At least two weeks before town meeting, one complete copy of all material to, is to be presented to the town meeting shall be filed with the town clerk for public inspection. So I heard, I heard wells, floor space or square footage and sale prices. Anything else?
Yeah, on here it also talks about major utilities. We have a drainage plan, they have a conceptual location of a septic system, but it's not showing where either, and a conceptual location of the well, but doesn't have any additional information on the actual utilities themselves.
Just, just along those lines, John, if I could, I, I did have sort of a general question on that in terms of the, the building envelope being a certain percentage of the site, to what extent that can increase or decrease, the extent to which the contours of the building envelope can change, the extent to which the proposed location of the septic systems, the wells and the drainage or detention basins can change.
So the building envelope, John, is that, do you mean the, not square, do you mean something other than square footage?
Well, as I understand it, the building envelope is approximately 40% of the site.
Oh, yeah, max, maximum.
Okay. So, so you, you wouldn't, you'd be okay with some sort of limitation in that respect?
We feel very comfortable with that number. It's conservative.
Okay. And as far as its contours, the way you've, you've drawn it on the maps, to what extent can that, that change in terms of where it might go? And the reason why I ask that is, is because that, that doesn't correlate to any particular location on the ground, right? This is just a conceptual drawing of where you think in, in general terms where that could be located, correct? Am I correct in that assessment? There's nothing on the ground that depicts that, that building envelope.
Right, yeah.
And, and you've, you've indicated the proposed septic systems and detention ponds, I believe?
Mm-hmm.
Now, what I was interested in is how you arrived or what, what considerations you took into account in terms of locating them at that particular location? And the concern being is what we have in the maps is one thing, whether or not that can change? And if so, have there, have any alternative sites or locations on the site been considered by Pulte? So, so what I'm driving at is what we have is the plans?
Mm-hmm.
And to what extent that's going to change if in fact the town approves this?
So as far as the, the basins, our engineers have, have done a preliminary, you know, stormwater design, but it's not, it's not completely sized and it's not final in, in any manner. It's general and it's conceptual and it's what we feel is a, a good representation of something that's possible, I guess possible. So, so right now we're showing three, you know, locations of stormwater basins and there's a piping network of catch basins and underground storm drains that would flow into them and then outside of the basins, they would, they would flow into the, into the wetlands. We've located them on the lower elevations of the site. That's typically where they're located. I, I don't think that they should be tied to these exact locations. The, the intent is that they're conceptual and they may, you know, slide one way or another based on final designs during the final development plan, but in general, I think they're a good representation of what we're expecting and where they, where they would be located.
And I'm not trying to lock you into a particular location. I understand that this is an ongoing process that is developed and changes, but I'm just wondering to what extent they can change, whether you're expecting that they might, whether, and I'm assuming that, that what you've done is a, an assessment of the site and it's an engineer and that you've assessed that there'll, at least at this point, there won't be any further need beyond the three that are depicted in the plans? Is that a fair assessment?
Well, it would, I would hate to have to live with those three or there's actually another one down here in the corner for this, for the stormwater for this lower section of the, of the site, but, I mean, with the three turned into four and there was another one here or this one shifted over, you know, I would, I would expect that that would be within the, within the limits of change, you know, from a preliminary development plan to a final development plan, but certainly that would be, you know, open for your board's interpretation. I mean, if something, it, it's a balancing act. If something shifts, does, does it have to go back to town meeting? I'm not, I couldn't answer that. I don't know the, the intent of that.
And just along those same lines, your sense of the septic, how, how firm is that location and size?
So, so right now, just for, for everybody's, let's see, this is probably best. So right now, the location of this, of the septic field is, is up here in the, in the north corner of the site and we've done extensive testing up there and, and we need to do more testing with the Board of Health, so we're comfortable that, that area will, will be the leaching field location for the site, but there may be, there may be a need to add additional areas within the, within the footprint, but I don't know where those areas would be today.
And you're not, as, based on your current knowledge, you're not anticipating that that would occur?
Anticipating that, that what would occur?
That you'd need further either septic facilities or leaching fields?
Right now, those are the locations that we've identified for the leaching facilities. Whether they need to be expanded upon, I, I can't, I, I don't know.
And based on your testing, has at least the, the area shown close? I mean, is it somewhat calculated or is it somewhat guessed? Do you know what I mean? Was, I mean, with the testing, you have some kind of perk rate, so you have some idea what's up there. Is the, is the, is the area that's indicated up there reasonably? Is the, is the area that's indicated up there reasonably estimated?
It's, it's hard to answer that because we haven't gone through the Board of Health process yet. There's, the Board of Health has rules and regs that, that govern the, and it's hard, and it's hard to know how large of an area we're going to need until we go through that process.
Well, one of my questions I had about the utilities, I was asking specifically for the septic and the septic location up there, and more or less for essentially the system that'll collect and drain to that. So maybe you can't answer this based on this, but one of my questions is, is there somewhere, I'm looking at the contours, and I'm looking at, it looks like the, it's kind of a high point at the northern part of the site, and the roadway. Is your intention to have all the septic flow by gravity, that system, or are you going to have pumping systems, there's going to be a pressure system in there?
So, where, where elevation allows, all of the sewer would flow by gravity in the roadway to the system, but there are some units that will not be able to flow by gravity, so they would be either, they would be either pumped up in a, in a pump station, or they would be, have individual grinder pumps in, in their homes that would, that would pump the flow up to the, to the gravity system, which would take it to the, to the septic location.
Just basically, whereas now, do you have an estimation of what percentage would have to be pumped?
I, I would say that somewhere along this cutoff here, that these homes will have a hard time making it by gravity to the back, but I don't know the exact number. It would need to be final, final engineered.
Too, too quick, I think, questions? Unit density will be what?
So, right now, the, the project site that's proposed to be rezoned to EA is eighty-eight acres. The number of units that are proposed is sixty-six, so the unit density is zero point seventy-five units per acre. I think the zoning allows for up to four units per acre, so we were well under that, that requirement.
And the proposed total floor area?
So, the, there is no requirement for floor area, it just, it just, it asks for it, and in the preliminary development plan, we have a table where we've, where we've listed what it is, what it's proposed to be, and it's one hundred and sixty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet is, is what we've, what we've identified that we would need to be under, but there, there was no requirement in the actual zoning of a, of a certain percentage or a certain number, I don't believe.
Although I think there's one implicit, Mark, in that five point six dot six A of the bylaws provides that the final development plan can't vary, not allowed, the planning board's not allowed to permit any increase in the dwelling unit density, nor an increase of greater than ten percent of the total floor area. So I think implicit in that is there does have to be, the total floor area is the base for that calculation.
Right, so we, we've done that calculation, and that's the number, so-
Right now, it's one sixty-one eight twenty.
Yeah, we think that's a conservative number that we can live within.
And, and the proposal is no more than twelve duplexes?
Well, so right now, there are twelve duplexes. Twelve, thirteen?
Twenty-four units, twelve, twelve buildings.
So, twenty-four, so, that's the current, that's the current number of duplexes on the preliminary development plan, but as we work with the planning board and the final development plan, I guess it, that could increase, should we go through the process with the planning board and certain discussions are had to improve the plan? You know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. It doesn't have to decrease, but it, right, the total number of dwelling units wouldn't change, but whether, you know, the twelve duplexes went to fourteen, I think it would be up to the board, and we're just trying to leave a little bit of flexibility for, for your board to make improvements as we, as we work through the final development plan.
Yeah, that was actually, my question as well, in the process of building these things where you build them as, as you sell them, or, I'm not sure if, if it's the cart or the horse, but, but, but you, you build them, you don't build them all at once, you build them as you sell them in some, some staggered fashion.
That's right.
And, and as you sell them, if there's demand for more duplexes, or more Abbeville series, or whatever, you would, so the, the mix here is intentionally not specified by individual model type, so that you have that flexibility as you sell them?
Well, as far as the detached homes are concerned, what we'd like to do is have the flexibility that it's, it's a box on the plan, so that when a, when a proposed homeowner comes into the sales office, and they, and they would have a choice of the four, the five floor plans that they want to buy, and they're not tied to a specific home at that specific location. But as far as the duplex locations are concerned, that would be finalized as part of your final development plan. We wouldn't change that without coming back to the board.
Okay.
And the proposed secondary access, is that you anticipate what's being proposed there is a gravel road similar to what was previously suggested?
Yes. So, the intent there is to do the minimum amount of width and surface needed in order to provide a adequate secondary access drive that would be, that would be approved or acceptable to, to fire safety. So police and fire would have to be involved in those conversations to make sure the base can handle their fire truck, and, and it's wide enough.
And, and just to follow up on that, the secondary access on Maple Street, did that require homeowner or landowner approval? And secondly, does the other alternative leading to Wildwood, is that something that you have acquired the necessary interests in the land in order to achieve that?
So, alternative A, which is the emergency access drive that goes out to Maple Street, is, is within our control.
It is?
Yes, it's part of, it's part of the land being requested to be rezoned to EA. However, it does, it does cross wetlands, jurisdictional areas of the Conservation Commission, so any, so that, that access route will, will require an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, as will, as will the, the whole project in general. We will have, if we were to get the rezoning, not only do we come back to your board, we actually, we also go to the Board of Health, and we go to the Conservation Commission for their thorough process. So that's, that one, and the access out to Wildwood, that crosses private adjacent land that's owned by, not under our control, by a private other landowner. We do not have any agreements or any rights over that land, so that's why we're calling, that's why we're showing two alternatives. So, the theory there is that if we were to gain control over the land to Wildwood, we would, by showing on the preliminary development plan, we would, we would, we would be identifying that that's a possibility. However, should we not be able to acquire that right, or that easement, then we would have to fall back to Maple Street, and that would be our, that would be the access drive, that would be part of the plan.
Well, related to that, I guess, it may, I'm not sure it matters one way or the other, but, but in this illustration, the Wildwood Drive Access goes, it looks like it, the portion that's heading northeast is, is not on the, on, on your property, and on another illustration showing trails, the trail is. If I'm, you, you see the-
Yeah, I do, I know what you're saying. So that will, this, this, I know the audience can't see this red, but right here, that's, it's a conceptual-
Yeah, yeah.
-path. Actually, the intent of it would be there is an existing trail that comes from here, comes up, comes to here, and then I actually think it hugs this property line.
Yeah.
And then, so it would follow along the existing path, you know, to the practical, most practical, feasible way we could. There is some grading, not issues, but there's some grades there that we'd have to deal with, so we would want to pick the flattest terrain that, that would be most suitable for, you know, fire access.
Well, we were going through in kind of a sequence, but we're, we're, these are all good. The, let's talk about, and John, unless you have more questions about the emergency access, I'll ask about wells.
No, thank you.
I had a question on, well, not actually a question, just this, it's the same sort of thing. On the wells, the, in the, in the preliminary development plan, there's a, a good description of the process. This is Appendix E in, in the February twenty-fourth-
Yes.
-discussion. In Appendix E, Jay Billings from Northeast Geoscience has a letter from Jay to you, Mark, February twenty-fourth, and it's, that's what the appendix is. And it describes the process on the second to last paragraph, so on page two, it says, "In the event that the testing identifies impacts to neighboring wells such as unacceptable water level drawdown, the project proponent must address these impacts." And, and goes on to say, "It's rare that these impacts, impacts of this type are realized on projects of this scale. Generally, the most cost-effective method to resolve this type of issues, this type of issue involves deepening or replacing selecting, selected neighboring private wells." And, and I know we discussed it in more detail, but this statement says the project proponent must address these impacts. I guess I'd just like to get a letter from Pulte as part of the preliminary development saying you will address. It's a, it's a sort of a, almost a contractual thing. Again, it's kind of like what Chuck was saying with, with a, a contract, just making sure it's here. I think the intent is clear, just ought to be specified.
That's important, so we can, we can do that.
Great, thank you. Anything else on wells?
I, I think that may be a DEP, DEP requirement.
Yeah, I mean, as, as part of-
Hold it. Sorry, you're going to have, you're going to have to go up to the microphone. It's right in the middle of-
Can we do this now?
So, you, sir, I'm sorry. Please, please identify yourself and your address and ask a question and-
Okay. My name's William Domi, I live in Sherwin. And I do, do know a few things about wells, septic, you know, all that sort of thing. But one question that has haunted me is, I haven't seen on your plans here any single plan that shows the groundwater flow at different times of the year over this area with, what, sixty-some-odd facilities? And that, that could ultimately be a very significant characteristic of what has to happen or to deal with these onsite groundwater well supplies. And I don't see really on this any, any real definiteness of it. It's very important, of course, while, while I'm here, I'll at least say a couple more things. And that's, that is that it all, it all goes back to my house, my wife, and everybody else. I'm sure you've gone through this a hundred times, but the fact is that we have situations where, we have a town with a certain high, very, very high percentage of, of wetlands, rock, and everything else. I live on a lot of rock myself, and they're not easy to get, they're not easy to get wells that work when you're dealing with that many number of them, unless you take into account such things as how the water is flowing and stuff like that, because they're going to be key in whether or not you can, you can do it.
Well, we've, we've, in this plan, we've got some wells, a well that's defined as a location, is a common well. It's classified as a public well. So I think in the process, it's been, it was described in the first hearing meeting of putting in that well and the testing method and looking for impact and measuring, measuring its performance according to MA, Massachusetts DEP standards. So that process, that's all been described, and I, and I violated my own rules by trying to keep this going, but I, I appreciate your, your comment, and I think if the, does the board feel that, that we need to just discuss more than what was described at the, at the first hearing in presenting this information?
No, I, I just think it's important, though. John, you had mentioned something about a contractual obligation as far as the impact on, a potential impact on a budding wells, and I had mentioned to Mark just now in terms of DEP requirements, and I think he started to answer that, and I think that's important that, that that be clearly understood, what, what the obligations are as part of that, that permitting process.
And just as a reminder, and just as a quick reminder, there was a deliberation between the single water supply source and multiple wells, and there was some agreement that we thought the single water supply source was essentially net better as, as right prescribed permitting process by DEP. That's pretty conservative for public water supply, and I believe some of that even includes groundwater direction and so on, and I think, I believe that that has actually been well asked and answered at a previous hearing.
It's, it's a good point, though. When the town adopted this zoning bylaw in nineteen seventy-eight, I'm sorry, seventy-nine, and then amended it in two thousand and eight, that was not one of the required pieces of data that was required to be supplied. We certainly explored it in great detail when we talked about the impact on wells and whether to have a community well, but the current zoning bylaws adopted by the town in nineteen seventy-nine doesn't require water flow data.
Or direction, as you say.
If I could just add one thing, hi, Bill. So, the Board of Health regulations have an environmental health impact report, requirement, and so as part of this project, we'll, we'll have to, to work with the Board of Health on, on addressing concerns such as what, what you just mentioned, but that's not part of the preliminary development plan.
Bill wrote that regu-, Bill wrote that regulation.
Yes. I know Bill's very experienced in this stuff.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I have, I have one, one additional thing here, and it's with the whole, the whole project area. My wife, as I said, and myself, and whatever else, we moved here twenty years ago because we wanted to live in a rural area with our large areas where there's a lot of development in high-density places. Here we are, so many years later, seeing that's what's happening here. Listening to this meeting tonight, it's obvious that, or it seems obvious that the decision has already even been made, and who knows? We certainly don't, we have to, we liked our wetland, we like our vegetation, we like our bedrock and all that stuff, and this is the initial key, and I'm sure there'll be others that will be able to give you some words also, but this stuff is going to go away in the favor of the development. And if you had a, if you had a larger town and less people, you might be able to justify doing something what you're doing here, but here you're taking a second, very high density, and not much when you really get down to attenuating it.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm sorry I violated my own rules about trying to finish the deliberation here, and I, and George, I know you, you're very politely waiting, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your comments and thoughts on, on this.
Bill, you have a lot more than twenty years here and a lot more experience than everybody else, and we appreciate that.
Well, the, the real figure is-
Yes, but not-
That, that's just doing septic system.
Ah, come on now, you wrote most of the rules.
That's right.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that, and all the years you've lived here.
Well, in order to keep moving along so we can, can open this up to other good comments, and I'd like to finish our list of things that we mentioned. And so we talked about wells, density, number of, number of duplexes. And last thing on that, number of duplexes, that the number, the actual number then would be finalized in a special permit. So, and, but the, but the, the single units could vary. The square footage, the, that's, it's in your preliminary development plan is what's restricted to, to the percent change. Okay. So the other thing was, we had mentioned sale prices. We talked about utilities. I don't know if there's more there in the septic system location. I think we've talked about that. So, so sale prices.
The reason I, I mention that is that I have been asked to ask you if there is any room within your concept to have a very small number of the duplexes that are even lower in price, perhaps one or two of them, within the overall scheme of, I believe, an average price of six hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, I, I think the, I'm not sure how best to answer your question, but, I mean, at this time, I mean, the homes would be, would be open to the market, and they would be, they would be purchased at the price, at the time of construction that, that they would be valued at and what people would pay. So as far as arbitrarily restricting a value of a home, we haven't, we haven't been open to considering that. I mean, but just, so to say it a different way, though, is what we have done is we have incorporated a number of different types of product. We've incorporated attached homes into the plan, which will, which will be at a, sold at a lower price point than the detached units. So, you know, from our perspective, we've tried to accommodate that request by offering a wider range of size homes and which would offer a wider range of priced homes.
Yeah, actually, it's one of the issues that is not settled in my mind, and I'm interested in a discussion amongst the board, the stated purpose of the EA zoning. I mean, I view our role, our obligations to determine whether or not they've met the elements of the preliminary development plan. But the purpose of this whole bylaw is to provide for...
Reasonably priced.
...specially designed and reasonably priced housing. I'll admit to my biases, having worked first as an antitrust lawyer, that reasonably priced is generally set by the market. This is not low and moderate income housing, which is dealt with in the two thousand and eight amendment.
Chuck, can you get a little closer to your mic?
It's not low and moderate income housing, which is, which is dealt with in the two thousand and eight amendment, but that's an open question in my mind. Does this meet that criteria that is reasonably priced? Does reasonably priced mean market price? Because that's basically what Pulte has proposed here.
And I guess my comment, there's sort of two thoughts. One is, the Council of Aging did a survey. They got five hundred and twelve responses, and seventy-eight percent favored a price range between four hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty. So seventy-eight percent...
What's the date of that survey?
Let me remember, it was about three years ago.
I thought in advisory that...
Two years, November twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve, November two thousand and twelve?
Thank you. So I guess that, I've thought about it as well, Chuck, and, and I guess I think that's a pretty, a pretty significant survey result. And, and then, and that was just, that's to the public. That was a survey given to the whole public. The other thing is that Council of Aging just recently voted unanimously, the board voted unanimously in favor of this, this proposal.
So acknowledging what the prices were suggested?
Yeah. With the existing pricing that's been presented in the preliminary development plan. So that's a select group, that's the Council of Aging, that, I don't know, the, what's, to me, that's influential to me in, okay, there's experts in over fifty-five that are saying this price range is, is acceptable. And then to a survey that was given to five hundred and twelve people in, in general, seventy-eight percent were okay with that range. It didn't go, it was four hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty.
Just to follow up on that, John, because I haven't seen that survey, is that like a range, one of the checkboxes that you could fill out on that survey, that range from four to seven? How, how was that?
Yeah.
Do we know how that range was, was achieved?
Yeah, yes. There were several ranges.
And that was one of the ranges?
No, that was a combination. There were one, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, six ranges, at least in the, in the summary.
What was the lowest price point range in that?
Four fifty. And a million five was, or a million fifty was the high.
Yeah, although having, in terms of the need for elderly housing, we certainly heard a lot of, of individuals who've talked about wanting to stay in town. And when our four children moved out of town, we were looking for smaller housing. And I'm sorry that Abbey Road wasn't an option. We almost ended up moving back into Jamaica Plain because finding something under four fifty in this town is a pretty remote possibility. So the...
Of course, we do have Woodhaven.
Well, I think the, it's, I guess what other people on the board think. I think this price range is okay. I think it'd be nice if there were a couple that were lower price.
Well, it seems that the seventy-eight percent, four fifty is a little lower, is a lot lower than your entry that you're offering. So that even though there's that high end that they agreed upon, the seven fifty, I don't see anything in the lower end that seems to be something they'd favor.
Initially, wasn't it higher, and the duplexes brought it down?
Yes. But what are the duplexes again? Remind me?
We're projecting homes between, between, with a value of five hundred to seven hundred and fifty, I believe. So there's quite a range of, and again, they're projections, but we feel very, very comfortable with our projections. We feel very confident with them. But, but they're projections. They'll be, they'll be priced at the time of, of delivering to market.
Do most of your duplexes tend to go in that higher end, though? You said five to seven fifty.
Well, I'll just read from, I'm looking at the, the preliminary development plan says the duplexes would range, projected pricing is five hundred to six hundred thousand. And on the single units, the projected range of the four different models, the, the high and low is five hundred, the low is five twenty-five and the high is seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Could you, could you say that first one?
Continue your package.
Five twenty-five?
On the single units, the projected low price is five twenty-five, and the projected high price is seven fifty. And in the duplexes, the projected range is five hundred thousand to six hundred thousand.
Oh.
It's in it, yeah.
Excuse me. I might be able to offer a little bit more insight. They're actually selling these units over at Legacy Farms, and they have the unit prices on them.
Yeah.
If you want to take a look.
All right, let's, let's, I appreciate everybody's patience, I really do. Any further comment?
I had a follow-up on a different question here.
All right, is there any further on, on this? Are we, are we, do you know what you need to know on this pricing? Or do...
I have an overall question, and I understand this is a process, but this proposal is a substantial one for, for Sherwin. It adds four percent to our housing stock. It is on a street that I'm in a butter, three lots off on Maple Street for people that drive and walk on Maple Street. I respect the, your traffic guy has a very good reputation, but it's, in my view, it's already a bad street for traffic, a horrendous street for, for walking, for besting traffic. And it's going to make a bad to very bad road even worse. And I guess I was surprised when I saw the proposal today of a thousand dollar a unit impact remediation fund. And I understand, as a member of our Board of Selectmen said at the advisory meeting, that this is a, a process and a negotiation. But my understanding is that a, a, a three percent remediation fund is very typical for developers. The town of Framingham, I think, has a specific range of three to six percent. The total value of these units is about forty-two point nine million built out, and at three percent, that gets you to a one point two, one point three million dollar remediation fund. At six percent, it doubles it. I appreciate the gathering center. I think even more valuable would be a community center, the seniors in town. Washington and Maple Street is one of the worst, it's the second worst intersection in town in terms of accidents, and this project doesn't help that. People that drive Maple Street know how bad it is at rush hour. So I understand this is not part of the preliminary development plan, but I am very concerned. I think this is an extraordinarily paltry offer. There are additional steps. It is a negotiation, as a member of our Board of Selectmen noted. And at the end of the day, the preliminary development plan is, those elements don't include this specifically, but in terms of the overall fiscal impact on the town, it is relevant.
Yeah, and I think the other is, we are talking about the preliminary development plan, and we're talking about the EA zoning. And the EA zoning is clearly connected to the, to the town center. And I think, maybe, I think that's what this, the, that's what I hear. This proposal is, is acknowledging that connection, sorry, by a thousand dollars per unit, but it's acknowledging that connection.
Right. I think the principle's been acknowledged, and I think most developers acknowledge that major projects have an impact.
I would like a follow-up on that. When is that usually set? Because, I mean, it's somewhat, I'd almost have it remain silent and say to be determined, rather than have that number out there, a thousand. I mean, a thousand dollars a unit is not enough. It's just not even, not even close to something like this for a, for mitigation. But when is that negotiation proper? Is that after the time of improvement, we go to the actual special permit? If that's the case, I'd prefer to actually stay silent, because a thousand dollar a unit isn't, is not going to be close. Something like this, that has four percent of the housing stock of the town, should have a reasonable mitigation, at least a two percent or something like that, that actually does an improvement. Sixty-six thousand dollars wouldn't even pay for a few stop signs.
Well, the discussion is being had here as we speak, so speaking up is, is, is part of that. And the goal is to get something that, that the town believes in and will, will vote two-thirds vote, if that's, so that's part of that package. Our, our job is to say, is this in the EA zone, and is it, is it the requirements of preliminary development plan? So we're trying to stay focused on that, and I will open this up shortly to the, for public comment. I think these are the right comments, these are the right discussions.
John, can you just develop, explain what a preliminary development plan is, please?
Harley, I read it earlier, were you not here?
But is it the idea of, you're looking for the future past this project, or just this specific project in this specific place?
The latter. It's a specific preliminary development plan for each application, has to be approved by this board. Obviously, the other elements have to be approved by the Board of Health Conservation Commission. That preliminary development plan goes to town meeting and requires a two-thirds vote. We have to submit a report on whether or not they've met the elements listed. John read them in five point six three. And an overall assessment of the plan. And I understand it's a process, the whole discussion. Pulte has been responsive to a number of the issues that people have raised, but to be fair to both Pulte and the town, there's no one single negotiator. You know, Harley, if you and I are negotiating to buy our house, it's a lot easier process. And I understand that process becomes convoluted, but the PDP, the preliminary development plan, is site-specific. It is this project. I've heard people say that this opens up the town to other EA permits, and it does because it's in our bylaws. When the town adopted this in nineteen seventy-nine, we, as a, as a group, said that we would, plans that met this, these requirements would be presented to town for town meeting vote. But the final development plan requires approval by two-thirds of town meeting. And then some of those pieces, the footprint can't vary by more than ten percent, density can't vary, can't vary off of the PDP, the preliminary development plan.
So as a group here, we should be just focusing on, does this meet EA requirements? Because that's really all you want to hear. You don't want to hear that this...
Harley, if you're going to talk, all right, are we, hold on, hold on.
I still have one follow-up question, just simply before you let go. I understand mitigation's not highly proven, and that's why I want to make sure. Chuck, where was that thousand dollars a house? Is it anything that's in our materials at all?
It's the letter that we got today from Bowler. It's two, four, it's the third bullet down.
Oh, it's actually on the plan?
Yeah, it's a note on...
Yeah, it's been...
Yeah, so it's on the plans.
The preliminary development, this is an amendment, the letter you got today, you're looking at. And Mark mentioned it in this meeting, says, in, it's added note number eight, commitment of contribution of sixty-six thousand dollars, thousand dollars to be, per unit to be used by the town for downtown enhancements and/or sidewalk slash trail improvements.
And if that's in the preliminary development plan, and I do think it is germane to our discussion here, and I either want that amended in some fashion, either negotiate appropriately, or it's amended to be, to state a quantity to be determined in the future. Because that's a scary low amount to have on a plan that we're going to vote on to approve, and I won't, I won't vote for this amount.
Just, just along those lines, as I read the bylaw, we're not voting on approving plans or not approving plans. So we're, we're asked a very simple question, and that's whether or not sufficient information has been presented to give reasonable assurance to the town. And in fact, this can be developed as has been proposed. So we're not accepting plans, we're not approving plans, we're not doing anything of the sort here. All we're doing is, is giving some report to the town that indicates that they've given us enough information so that you can have reasonable assurance that it will go forward.
That's right.
The Abbey Road project is at the stage where the PDP, the preliminary development plan, got approved by this board. It got approved at town meeting. I don't think it's quite unanimous, but it's close to being unanimous vote. They still don't have a permit. They've got to come back to us for the final permit. But John's description of that is absolutely correct.
That helps out with that.
Yeah.
I have one follow-up, John, before you open it up. As far as the communal facility, you described as a room with some bathroom facilities as well. I had two questions on that. One is, could you give us just a little bit more information in terms of the dimensions of that? Number two is, where you have proposed, situated that, is that location permit any expansion of what you've proposed here? So let's say, and the reason I'm asking, let's say the town, in its wisdom, decided that they would like more than what you're suggesting here is a room that's a gathering spot. Is, is, does this plan permit a change in that area to permit you to address concerns that the town might have on that?
Mark, I think the next slide shows it even better.
It seems tucked away in that bend.
So to answer your first question, the, the gathering center is, is shown by, it's thirty feet wide by fifty feet deep. And there, there is plenty of room, looking at it, that it would be, it could be expanded by a reasonable extent, whether, whether it be, you know, ten or twenty feet extra in width, or ten or twenty or thirty feet, you know, extra in depth. But we propose it at thirty by fifty.
What will the design look like? Will it favor one of the... Will it favor one of the-
Yeah, to be, I mean, we, we don't have it designed, but it would be compatible with the, with the rest of the community. It, you know, it could have a cupola on top. I've heard cupola in the past, so, you know, we'll give it a cupola. But, you know, it would be designed to be, you know, harmonious and compatible, and aesthetically pleasing, and fit in with the character of the, of the development.
Anything else?
Just one, one question with the purposes, and it says specially designed and reasonably priced housing. When people, when this was being written, especially design mean one-floor living, or is it supposed to have things that help people in the bathroom and things like that? Because it says elderly housing.
Do you know, I've been thinking about all of this. My mother and my mother-in-law both lived to be 90 in their own homes. My mother lived in a senior community. My mother-in-law, bless her, lived in the middle of Manhattan. It's better that way when you get old. They didn't live in life care centers. And a lot of the comments that have been made here reminded me of life care centers. I'm 76, and I don't feel most of the comments that were made really fit my concept of my next years. So I think that the word specially designed means appropriate for people who are still getting around on their own two feet, getting in their cars, going out in the world and living. And these are units, as I understand it, that have been designed for senior living with a bedroom on the first floor.
So that's what it's more for that?
So that, that to me seems to make sense. I think there was a very good question that I think maybe we should bring up. People pointed out, and I went to look, as many people have, that on the second floor, there's a wonderful space and a bathroom. And people were concerned that it might have ended up being extra bedrooms. What is the process for making sure that it stays at the two-bedroom? Is it the, is it, in your relationship with the Board of Health, that it comes out being that it is definitively a two-bedroom? And how is that?
So, so the homes need to be built as two-bedroom. So for the initial construction done by Pulte Homes, they would be two-bedroom, two-bedroom homes. They would be deed restricted, so all of the homes would have, have a deed that go along with the homes, and they would be restricted to be, you know, two-bedroom homes. In the future, anybody that would want to make any modifications to their homes, they would have to first get approval from the condominium association, the Board of Directors, and that condominium association would be guided by their documents, would not, which would not allow any additional bedrooms to be created. And, and second more, they would also, any, any modifications that would require a building permit would go before the building inspector, who would be guided by the restriction on these homes, that no additional bedrooms would be created. So there's, there's some type of structure there in place that would, would not allow these, these homes to be more than two bedrooms.
Okay.
Okay. If there's nothing else that I, that I'm, I'd like to open this up to public comment, and when I do, George, you're number one. And thank you.
We'll get the phone fingers out for you.
I, I just, I noticed the addition with the no permanent residence, but I was just curious, how is this going to be policed when you say 55 or older with no permanent residence? Can you live with mom and dad for two or three years, a four-year, considered not temporary? Just wondering how you could read permanent.
So, so I think our definition for that, it goes to the school, the school committee, the school department. So if one needs to be a permanent resident to attend the Sherburn schools, then that's the definition, and the reason that we use, that has, that language has been used in other municipalities, and we took it from there, for that reason. Rather than getting into details like, for example, you know, no more than nine consecutive weeks without skipping two weeks and coming back for four weeks, or, or things of that nature that are much more detailed, we selected that language for that reason. So clearly, it's all targeted at prohibiting kids in school.
Okay. So, so is that something we need to, we should, I mean, is that something we should define that reference, you could reference a school glossary or something, or?
So I, I hesitate to do that, because I'm not a lawyer, and I think that treads close to the edge, what you can actually do. So we didn't, we're open to suggestions of the board, clearly, but putting language in that says you can't go to school is, is a little more-
Right, well, is that when I needed it?
It's a little more than we're comfortable doing, and we've done in other communities.
There are a lot of young families present. I'm sure you could tell us, when you went to register your kids at school, that you have to prove in some way where you lived in town?
I remember where I was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you should have confirmed you did live in town. I think I should have though.
If you call the Mass Department of Housing, you also legal aid, they'll tell you situations where there are kids living in these projects.
Let's use the microphone. Robin, are you okay with that?
I'm not sure. I really don't. No, I don't know enough about it. If someone, emergency hardship, I have to move in with gramps and gramps for seven months, or are they allowed, or if it's five months, they need to go to school?
Yeah, I would assume that a grandchild's staying with the grandparent for the summer would not be a permanent resident, but-
Well, I'm not talking about summer, I'm talking about the school year, if this is based on school.
Yeah, well, I'm focusing on permanent is the language. Gina, do you have any suggestions, based on your experience, on how to address this issue?
No, only that, I do think the school, the tying it to the school attendance is, is a good thing. I happen to know, because my wife works for a school system, that they do have to show documentation of residency in order to register for attendance at the school.
So if that's, I don't know, if that's a criteria, if that's a criteria, if there's, if it, instead of saying no permanent resident, whose residence is documented to be in Sherburn, you know, or in this development?
My, my assumption is that the condo association will partially police this as well, but I also have the view that Jeff Rudin expressed at the advisory committee hearing, which is, if somebody sees somebody down at the bus stop, are they going to drop a dime on them? I don't think so, and I, I guess I'm less concerned about it, because I think the language, permanent, the goal is not to have somebody under 18 permanently living there, and if they're there for two or three months of the school year, that's probably getting close to being a permanent resident. A little less concerned about them being there in the summer, but I don't, I'm comfortable with the language.
Well, Robin, think about it. I'd like to open this up to public, if anybody has anything to say, otherwise, we'll just, only, George, thank you, and thank you, everybody. So if you want to speak, use the microphone, please identify yourself, try to keep it brief, don't repeat things, and thank you.
Good evening, my name's George Morgan, I live at 41 Bear Hill Road. If there's one thing that's abundantly clear in the last two hours of discussion here, is that they've raised far more questions than there's been answers. And John, I would encourage you not to put much weight on the Council of Aging report. The experience that Maryland, I have had in 28 years of being associated with elder care tells us that there is very little in that report that actually addresses the issues that are at hand here. We have a raft of issues regarding the elderly component of this zoning thing, we have a raft of issues, they're not yet been answered, on the accountability, on the affordability aspect of this. But in looking over, what I heard over the weekend, and looking at this map, just one observation to lead with, that land in its entirety, whether it's 88 acres or 92 acres, has been taxed. Gray's been paying taxes on that property from square one, and that's a cost that's not going to go away. That's real, no matter who you put on that property. Now, they can give away a portion of that property, in which case, the amount of revenue that's going to come back to the town is going to drop. Just what is the basis for the town revenues? It cannot be, from what Pulte itself says, they don't set the rates, assessors do. And we have yet, at least I have yet to hear any of the proceedings thus far on any of these venues, from the assessors department as to what they would assess any of these at. Now, by the standards that have been bandied around tonight, my house is affordable, and so is just about everybody else's in this room, if it's between $650,000 and $900,000. Now, if I were a resident of this location, I would reasonably ask, hey, why is my property at 2,500 square feet being assessed at the same rate as somebody who's got 5,000 square The answer to that is, assessors wouldn't do this. The only reliable estimate you can get for a market basis on this thing is not what these things are going to sell for, it's what they're going to be assessed for. Pulte can ask whatever they want for these things, and people can pay whatever they, if they can afford Pulte's prices, pay those prices. But that's not necessarily what these assessors are going to see these at. Realistically, you think 95% of the market value is what these are going to be assessed at? That's not affordable. If you're going to look at a definition of afford, elderly affordable here, you've got to have a working definition, which I've yet to hear, of what constitutes elderly here, and there's a raft of questions on what constitutes elderly here, and you have to have a working definition of what constitutes affordable in this town. Now, is 650 affordable? I don't think so. Not if you're looking at the rest of the average town pricing of houses in this town. If you're looking at affordable, it's going to have to be some point significantly lower than the average price of housing in this town. Now, you look at this taxability of the land itself, yeah, they're right, this should not figure into their projections, the town's already getting revenue from that land, in terms of the taxes Gray's already paying on it. So you're a resident of this, and you're in a condo association, and you're paying a condo fee, you're paying, you're on your mortgage, you're paying your taxes, and then you get another bill. Hey, what is this? Oh, this is for the undeveloped land. This is your portion of the undeveloped land, and okay, how's that going to be allocated? Well, let's say we have the first year of this development's operation, there are five residential buildings up there. Okay. What's your share of this undeveloped land's taxes going to be? Is it going to be the total assessed value of the 92 acres divided by five?
George, why don't we, really interrupt you, because Mark, you've answered that before, I think that-
Who pays these taxes?
I don't know what the question is.
Do we have a time limit?
Yes, time limits-
Do we have a time limit yet?
Yeah, we ought to, because we have limited time, but George, I think that, I think the answer is that the, the Pulte company, when they, as they own, they're the owners until they sell the complete, the majority of the sale of the condo association, they're responsible for-
So they're going to be paying the taxes on the land that's undeveloped?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I think it's currently, I think the land currently is 61B land.
It is.
The town gets $12,000 a year from this land.
How much?
$12,000 plus or minus.
Is that what Gray's paying on this?
12,000 because it's 61B property.
So George, please wrap it up, so we, we, we're behind you.
Realistically, you need to get, arrive at a definition that we can all understand of what constitutes elderly criteria here for awarding the zoning. You have to establish a criteria for what accounts, what constitutes affordables in this zoning proposition. We haven't heard those yet. And there's been a lot of questions raised about, okay, what goes into an affordability definition, what goes into a definition of elderly? And I would caution you big time, don't rely on that two-year-old study from COA.
Thank you.
There's a lot that we can detail, and in a lot of ways, why that is insufficient.
Can you sign a timer, please?
Yeah.
Please.
I have a timer.
Do you?
Advisory was two minutes.
Yeah, let's try to keep it at two minutes, and if we need to get a timer, we'll do a timer.
Okay, I've got notes, I'll try.
Thank you.
And I would, I would second the need for more data, and I think we need more-
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marion Noitré, Prospect Street. I think throughout this project, we've seen tonight a sort of vagueness on a lot of points that I consider very important prerequisites to know whether to vote for or against this plan. And that's why I think we would do well to take a little more time and gather data. Pulte has done a reasonable job of trying to do that with their hydrology report, their road report, that's what they can do, and of course, they have an expert doing those things, but in my world, a company that stands to profit from a project, when they hire an expert, that expert can provide good opinion, but it's not trusted until you have an independent opinion by someone who does not have a financial stake. And that is certainly true of the whole financial picture. I'm not passing judgment on your analysis, it's just that I think we do need an independent look. And also, the whole water septic environmental space, because we have this hydrology report, I'm sure he's a licensed hydrologist, but he is hired by Pulte, and therefore has a conflict of interest fundamentally. We need an independent hydrology report, so that we have better hard data on water flow, septic needs, et cetera. And regarding septic needs, I'm still very troubled by this bedroom question, because it feeds right into the septic system in more ways than one. The, the units, if they're two bedrooms, are, have septic requirements of a certain size, obviously. If there's an extra three-bedroom space, the septic requirements change dramatically. And who's to say that you are not going to move a bed into that extra room without the building inspector or anyone else involved? So we don't have the data we need there. And also from the Council on Aging, I really respect their, their efforts for the elderly, and I will be among you, believe me, very soon, already am. But we don't have a real, real information on the number of Sherburn downsizers who would be willing to pay these prices to live in this place. I know we have anecdotal data, a lot of people like it, a lot of people know we need it, but we don't have data. Okay. We didn't start it.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
But you're done. Darian, thank you very much.
Peggy Novak, Mason Hill Road. Actually, I have a much more specific question about the septic. It's my understanding that Pulte has done some testing on the site, but not completed that process, so I understand that. But what I've seen from the perk tests filed at the Board of Health, only about half of them have actually passed, and the rest have failed. What happens if, in fact, you cannot perk this property for 66 units? Does it morph into something else, or are we looking at a different type of system? Do you have a plan?
So you're asking us, and I'm-
Well, I'm, I'm asking, I mean, it addresses the, whether, whether this development can actually happen the way it's proposed.
So we have to do more testing, and we will do more testing in order to find enough area to perk the system for 66 units. If we, if we can't, then we would propose a different type of system, and if that, if that doesn't work, then, then there is no, there is no project. Obviously, this project needs water and sewer, but this is, this is the process that you have to go through, and we've done, we've done some testing, but we have to do more. It's not unlike Abbey Road, who's, who's spent all this year doing more testing for their project, even though they got their rezoning last year.
Does the board know if, if it doesn't perk, and so then the proposal is made for a different type of system, what's the process? Does it have to go before the planning board in the town again as a different project?
The zoning does not. The special permit, though, is going to go through all this detail, and it's going to go through the whole process with the Board of Health, and Conservation for Wetlands, and all those sort of things.
So it would be in the next stage process?
Yes.
One comment on that. During the final plan review, we have the right to actually approve less units, but not more. So if, for some reason, it's- So if, for some reason, it's septic, water supply, whatever else, they can't feasibly put in this many units, we can approve something less than that.
Right, right, right. The total floor area will never exceed beyond ten percent what they're proposing here. Even if they have to put in some sort of wastewater treatment facility, if it doesn't perk. And I just had a follow-up question on that, Mark, just when you're done.
I'm done.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Just in terms of the cost of something like that. A wastewater treatment facility, would, can you give us just a ballpark idea of what is the cost parameters for something like that?
A lot.
And that's what generated the...
And I said that to be funny.
In fairness, that's how you arrived at the sixty-six units, right?
Correct. Yes, wastewater treatment plants are very expensive, you know, far exceeding million, you know, a million dollars plus, and, and you need a lot of units to financially support one of those.
But in, in terms of the utilities, septic and water, this is subject to Board of Health regulation and approval. There's nothing in EA that overrides the town's very green and stringent Board of Health. So the normal Board of Health requirements are going to be satisfied. The EA permit doesn't give them any right to override those.
My question was because my understanding was that part of your charge is to...
Can't hear you, Peggy.
I'm sorry. It was my understanding that part of your charge is to have reasonable assurances that the development could be delivered as proposed in the plan.
Right.
So I was asking for those reasons.
Reasonable. Martha?
Martha Groton, one oh four Maple Street. I didn't quite get how you explained if we have damage to our wells from the well testing, how we get compensated.
Well, it was discussed, I think, in the, in the first meeting of the hearing. Mark, do you want to, in, in your plan, the, the report from the hydrogeologist says that, I can, I can read it. It says, "In the event the testing identifies impacts on, to neighboring wells such as unacceptable water level drawdown, the project opponent must address these impacts." And then it goes on to say, "It is rare that impacts of that type are realized on projects of this scale. Generally, the most cost-effective method to resolve this type of issue involves deepening or replacing selected neighboring private wells." So if the neighboring private well, I would presume, and Mark, you're going to put this in a more, in a, in a letter from Pulte, not from the hydrogeologist, if the neighbor said, "I don't want to have my well changed," then they'd have to find some other solution. Is that correct, Mark?
Yes. Jay Billings, our hydrologist, said it a lot more eloquently than I could, could ever do. But essentially, the DEP process is set up to protect the, to protect the interests of, of the, of the surrounding butter. So, but what, what Jay explained is that prior to doing any pumping tests associated with, with the well, we would contact all of the neighbors surrounding, surrounding the well, and let you know when we'll be doing the test, so that if you experience any issues with your well, that you would contact us, and that we would work, we would work through your issues.
Is there any comparable thing that we could do likewise for blasting effects from vibrations?
Yeah, the blasting is, is governed by the fire department. There's, there's definitely a blasting protocol that, that we would have to comply with.
Well, and you would, you're saying that, that you're, that protocol is so good that there would be no effects of...
I'm saying that the fire department has, and probably state, have local rules and regulations that govern any blasting that's done for, for projects. And, and we would, we would comply and follow those.
Okay. And would you please go up in the woods and cut the three trees that are blocking one of the trails that fell over last fall? And would you please smooth out the ruts and the mounds that are on the trails? And when could you do that?
We'll look into that.
And when will you let us know? When you will have an answer of when you have looked into it?
I will do my best to, to take care of your issues.
Thank you.
Tom?
Tom, Armston Hall Street, four things. First of all, I'm happy to see a community building emerge from the mists with a cubicle on top, and, and maybe that will give you the right to call it a village, if you like, finally. I do have a question, I think the square footage is good. My question is, did you have to move some houses, or how did you create space for where it's located now?
No, those, those houses were always in those same locations, there was a gap there.
Okay, so that was just, that was a gap. Okay. Number two, on the mitigation question, I think that, because, because that's going to be an important factor at town meeting, that it's got to be decided ahead of time. And you all, I think, have to be involved with the selectmen to get that whole thing nailed down. Because I agree with what Eric said, you know, a buck a house is not going to do it. Price point, when, Mark, when Grace was asking you about, well, can we, well, let me back up. The first section of what John read in the article said, "This is housing for, housing options for Sherburne people." Now, you know, we're not strange people, but as I remember from the survey, a lot of people were, a lot of people were looking at prices five-hundred and below. So rather than answer Grace's point by saying, "Well, it's whatever the market will bear," the question is, are you guys going to build something that is fundamentally lower priced than what you currently have in the plan? I think, Mark, that's the, that's the question for you all. To be more responsive to what I've seen in, in Sherburne, based on the survey, of a, a need for somewhat lower-priced options than you're currently planning on doing. The last point, I, I hear this talk about a provision of nobody eighteen and under. I think that's crazy. Are kids really so bad that you're not, that you're going to take umbrage at having a half a dozen kids in this development? I think it makes no sense at all. You, you, it's already been pointed out demographically that there are grandparents who might have a kid for a school year. I think there ought to be, there ought to be an allowance for that kind of family situation. Thank you.
Michael Lesser, fifty-four Forest Street. Just quickly, I'm going to be here as a conservation commissioner. I just want to go on the record that the issue of that third exit emergency on McGregor was not, there was no comment from the conservation commission. They withdrew that. We take no credit nor blame for them dropping that, that, because we did not respond to just hypothetical plot, projects and plans. So they did it on their own. Now I'll change gears to just being a resident. I'm going to try to focus on things that I haven't heard, even though I do see an issue about this idea of that it's not affordable but reasonable priced, and whether there is, I guess I'll step back and say, I guess I see the game at this point, if I understand it right, as whether you, Pulte modifies any of your project to be, to be a better sell at town meeting. We've already got a mixed approval and advisory, and so most of my comments are really about the fact that you're in a game of how to, how to get more votes. There's a lot of people who you'll never change on either side of the issue. I'm not going, I'm torn myself. It's a little, it's too big. There are no reason, they're not affordable, even though you're not required to do that. And it's too big, it's affordable, the revenue is going to be over a long period of time, so I have mixed feelings about that, too. But I'll still switch to, in terms of your game of what might make it seem a little nicer or more appealing, is I'm concerned about a whole range of issues of going beyond the standard construction. Things like, in stormwater management, do you go to your promise in some form, and I'm not sure how this would be articulated in the next month or two, things like low-impact development strategies for stormwater management? That'll be better for the hydrology of what goes on, and people are worried about the environment, the issues of the site. Do you deal with the fact of how you're going to do your landscaping? Do you deal with low-water use landscaping? Do you deal with native species? Do you deal with even organic practices? No pesticides? No fertilizer? You don't want phosphorus there. And that's coming eventually anyway. But there's a whole set of site development issues and environmental issues that you can address more proactively in terms of doing a sell. And there are rating systems out there from architects and landscape development sites, there's standard measures that you can, that you can sort of say that you want to follow if you want to make this project seem more appealing to the town of Sherburne, where you're using, you're trading on our name. Our reputation might be for bedlam, but we'd also like to think there's something good about our name. And that, when you're trading on it, that you, you're greener, more sustainable in the kind of project they can put forth to the town, and that could be just in the construction techniques. Whether you, you go beyond stretch, or, although stretch is pretty good, but just in terms of low-flow water devices, I mean, there's a whole range of improvements in construction that you might promise to do, or even prescriptions. You'll do a blower door test so that you show that your buildings are really airtight and meet these kind of codes. So I think there's a lot you could do to be proactive, to show that the construction and the site work is, is good and more attractive to people in the town. Thank you.
Michael, just one comment. The stretch code does include a measurement, an active measurement.
What's that?
Just saying that the stretch code does already, that we already have, as you know, more than anybody. But the stretch code does include the actual blower door test as part of the stretch code, so it's a performance test.
I'm just saying, there's a whole range of more proactive things that they could put forward that go beyond the minimum code.
And I think you said it very well.
The whole site development, everything that they could do.
My name is Wesley Worth, one thirty-three Western Avenue. I want to speak to similar issues as Mike, and I can be even more specific about some of those site impacts. And I want to say that in the bylaw, I heard the word "design," and I heard the word "natural features," two things which I think are very important, that get to the heart of what low-impact design is really about. And to me, what that means is looking at the site, understanding the site, looking at the natural, natural features, the hydrology, vegetation, the trees, the way the, the patterns, the movement, the site flow, and then making very careful, conscious decisions about how to best handle that, how to preserve the resources, how to keep the trees that are there healthy and alive, how to keep the water clean, and to keep all the people, neighbors, happy, just like they're part of that habitat, too. And some of the ways you do that are, first of all, by being aware, but then by planning to disrupt a site in the minimal way, amount, way possible. That means moving little earth, it means keeping big trees that are already there, there. It means no twelve-foot retaining walls, if there's a way to avoid using twelve-foot retaining walls. It also means making sure that the existing, that all the materials you use are environmentally friendly, like porous pavements, rain gardens, rain water collection wells, and there's lots of precedence for new development that are using these techniques. And what I'm seeing here is a totally generic, I would, I would call it old-school. Yes, they're meeting the criteria, there's a traffic engineer, there's a, there's a civil engineer, but it is not enlightened development, it is not well-conceived, and it does not hit these buttons. It is not no-impact development, and no one is giving that consideration. And I think that that is part of, you know, is critical to what, to the quality of all of our, our town, and the quality of, of our life, and to the quality of the people who are going to live there. And then, lastly, I mean, mitigation, we're talking about financial mitigation, but there's also environmental mitigation. If you build a twelve-foot retaining wall, if you clear-cut the entire envelope of where these buildings are going, which is what's going to have to happen in order to do this, so everything on that plan, can you go back to the plan with the green on it? Everything that's light green will be completely decimated, okay? And there are going to be huge amounts of fill coming and going, okay? All of which is very difficult to mitigate for. And mitigation, to me, means using native species, as Michael mentioned, or having some sort of, you know, remedial work that improves the environment to some, to balance off the destruction that's happening to the environment. So there's some sort of horse trading there, just on a very environmental level, it's not about one thousand dollars per unit, or it's, you know, what, what, what does it mean when you take out that many trees and disrupt that much environment? And then the last thing is that the home should have some degree of, and some, some component of energy efficiency beyond the normal. Solar panels, something.
Thank you.
I'm Peg Robinson, is this the right height? At twenty-eight Farm Road. If you got your Sherburne link today, you would know on page three that I'm officially old. But I think with that, maybe I've gained some wisdom, I hope I have. And one thing that's changed over the years is that I'm more adaptable to change, and I get a little concerned at the incredible fear of change that I sense here. I am in favor of the zoning change. I think we need the revenue. I think we've waited long enough for a concrete idea for what to do. I don't think we can wait for much longer for new ideas, because they weren't coming, and what's going to make them come now? I just would like to say I support the board's wonderful work on this project, and Pulte's ability to make changes, and thank you.
Lou Stewart, forty Maple Street. I've been following these meetings all along, some of them in person, some of them on the TV, and I haven't heard many people on Maple Street saying anything positive about this. Well, I'm going to, I'm coming out. I am very much in favor of this for many reasons, partly for the revenue enhancement, which was absolutely a project that the Revenue Enhancement Committee came up with to help us all with our taxes. When I, when I first came here in nineteen sixty, this was very much a little farm rural town, with very old houses, and occasionally a new one would go up. Well, then, then the boom started, and there was old orchard, lamplighter, all of them, old field, everything. And there was, after the first one, it was, that was it, no more, no more. People were outraged, just as they are now, about development. I just don't think you're going to stop it. This is, this is the way it is, it's progress. People like to live here, we like to live here. And I think this is a good solution for seniors in general, as the COA has said. As far as the Arthur and Marion go, I heard that they would not like this. Well, they're no longer here, and I think their children, who inherited the property, are obviously very much in favor of it, because they're the ones that proposed selling the land. They can't afford to keep it anymore, just as a lot of us can't afford to pay the taxes there. You know, that's a lot of income from them. So I would like to just close by saying, as far as walking to town goes, it used to be possible to do it. I live a little closer to town than these people would, but you don't want to do it. It's not safe. And so I'm proposing a sidewalk for Maple Street, which has been my battle cry from the very beginning. And we almost got one with, I guess, the remediation from side to hill, who has proposed it's a certain amount of money would be used for Maple Street sidewalks. Remember that, Gino?
Yes, I do.
My husband used to talk to Gino on a regular basis about this, and obviously, the money is long gone. And so I think if you want people to be able to walk to town, and children especially, I think, need a safer way to get there. Time up. Okay, I guess that's all I could say.
Thank you.
Ted Wong from one twenty-nine Maple Street. I'm glad to, I've been to most of the meetings, and I'm glad of the progress Pulte has made towards addressing some of the issues that we've seen. My big concern still is that the size of this project does not appear to fit Maple Street or Sherburne. I think that the original two-acre zoning really is appropriate for our town. You could put fifteen, twenty houses there, and I don't think any opposition would, would occur. You would not make enough money. The other thing, I think Robin mentioned, is that your design should have some accessories for elderly, such as handrails and bathrooms, maybe reasonably wide doors, so that, not ADA complacency, but something that would help the elderly take a shower and get out of the bathtubs. So you should address that as much as you can reasonably. I don't think this project addresses what I see as a big problem for Sherburne as far as developing more affordable housing. I think, if anything, this probably will come against us. I think, if anything, this probably will come against us in the future. Is the planning board looking at the revenue projections as part of your purview, and are you going to make an opinion on it?
It's in the, it's in their preliminary development plan.
Okay. I, I suggest that you ask them to assume that some senior citizens from Sherburne may buy those homes, and that they may sell those homes to hopefully young families that will allow their, their children and themselves to pay taxes to support us while we're getting old. But I would suggest a, maybe a 20% deduct from your revenues on the 66 units. And maybe you assume that you have one and a half to two kids per those 20% units, if, in fact, Sherburne seniors can afford to buy your homes. And I think that would maybe drop the revenues a little, but I think it would make it more realistic.
Sorry, Ted, just make sure I understand. So you're suggesting that by providing housing for seniors to move to from their homes, their present homes in Sherburne, then their homes would be...
Sold to maybe young families that love Sherburne schools and...
Right.
And want to bring the kids up in a rural, clean environment.
Okay.
And that really, you can't say that there's zero impact, because hopefully Sherburne seniors will love your project, go live there, and then they'll sell their homes to a younger population.
Rick Antell, McGregor Drive. I agree with Marion's point that we really need more data, more independent assessments. And my recollection from two prior meetings of this board was, there was a statement that, that you would do an independent market assessment. And so my question is, is that still going on? Is that something that this board is planning to pursue?
Well, we talked about it, we suggested that, that the developer might be willing to fund that to address those concerns, and that's where it stands.
So nothing has taken...
We've got a quote, but it hasn't happened.
Okay, thank you.
All right. It's, we're, we're going on time. I'd like to wrap up the comments soon. Go ahead.
How much time do I have?
Well, we'll give you two minutes.
Okay. Mark Senet, 75 Russet Hill Road. I do not live near Maple Street. And just from the brief things I've heard tonight, if you live near there, or why would you be opposed to this? Because you'd be nervous? Because you bought land, you didn't think this was coming, and it was coming. So with all due respect for all those folks that live there, I understand that. If it was next to my house on 75 Russet Hill Road, I might be concerned, too, and I get that, so all due respect to that. My family moved here in 1966. Been here on and off since then, and the tax rate is too high, way too high. And so, you know, I understand there's questions about this proposal and, and the details, and I, I, you know, we've got to work through those, but something's got to be done about the tax rate. This brings tax revenue. May not solve the elderly housing, but something's got to be done. When I, my wife and I and our family look at what we're going to do, we're in that kind of elderly group, 5960, where are we going to go? I'm out of here. Taxes are too high. If I buy a house at a million, it's going to be $20. That's, that's 20, that's ridiculous. Dover is almost half the price, same school system for the high school. So there was a survey that went around, what do you want to do? Do you want to join the board? What do you want to do? I want to be part of any committee that talks about how we raise tax revenue. Have to do it. All respect to the people who live there, I know, not my backyard, and I, you know, we've got to work through the details. But tax revenue is a major issue in this town. I've grown up all the time, it's ridiculous where we are. So every project has an issue. Whitney Street can't do this, five years, seven years, 10 years. Everything's got a problem. Can't beat this, not going to do that. The guy wants to build three homes down here on Main Street. Can we change the zoning laws? Not today, can't do it. So I'm not sure if there's a comprehensive plan to address this. I've heard that we want to talk about revenue. I just want to be the voice of a longtime resident of a great town. You've got to do something about revenue, and this has to incorporate what you think about. So I understand, and I don't want my neighbors to get mad at me on Maple Street. I understand your concerns, but there is that balance. We've got to deal with the revenue issue. Thank you very much.
Lanny Ruben, 26 Elliott Street. Just a couple of points of information. Is it unequivocally clear that the one-mile limit applies to the eastern point of this site on Maple Street? Or does it in fact refer to where the housing begins? Because it's one mile clearly to the eastern, eastern border, but not to the houses would be more than a mile.
Right. I can, I can read it. It's, it's, it states by public way, so yes, it's, it's, it's a mile from the split to let, to the land, so it does comply.
To the eastern border, it doesn't have to do with where the houses begin?
No, to the public way.
You refer to land, not the housing units.
Okay. The second question is access to the trails, that this road will be a private road, be a condominium road, whether it'll be guaranteed public parking, so the people will have access to the trail system. Well, they're coming in elsewhere, but once this road is built, it will be an easy access to those trails. Whether there's a guarantee of remaining public parking, even though it's a private road.
There's plenty of parking at the end of Wildwood, the whole cul-de-sac.
I guess, I, I hear your, your comment, Lanny, and I have, personally, I'll just respond that I've not thought of these trails as different than other trails in town, where there's places where I connect, where I get on the trail, and places where I don't. So I, I haven't thought of it as saying, let's do something special here. I hear your comment.
Harley Kaplan, 68 Maple Street. We just spent, since Saturday, Monday, with the Town Advisory Committee. They voted not to be in favor of this project. It was a four-to-four split, which means it was not in favor of going to the town meeting. Okay? That was after two days of meeting. And there was a reason for that, because I think what they saw was the actual reality of the situation. Most of the people who spoke at the meeting were concerned about two issues. One was money, and one was elderly housing. And I, what I did, and I tried to make it as brief as possible, is that I, this is my own opinion. I want to provide everybody to read this, and if you're against the project, I need people to come up after me, and we're going to sign up and start organizing to stop this project. But that being said, this project, and all due respect to my neighbor on Russet Hill, is not a revenue enhancer. It's just the opposite. No way. Because what's going to happen now, my property is right next door, I have 18 acres. My property now goes down in value, so now another developer comes in and says to me, you know something? Why don't you put 60 houses on your plot of land? Your house is less now because Pulte just built it. Why don't you do, and what am I going to say now? 60 houses. And I'm going to come in front of this committee and say, listen, you let the grays who don't even live in this town to have the property. Why can't I build 60 houses? Don't I have the right to do that? Don't I have a right to maximize my land? This is what's going to happen all over the town. But I want to get to what's important to you, whether it's affordable and proper housing for the elderly. I've been a financial advisor for 31 years. I work with a lot of people. I've done most of hell, a thousand different people in my day. Very few of my retirees will spend $650 to $750 to live in the middle of a swamp. I want you to look at that land, okay? That land is all surrounded by swamp. If you've ever been there in July and August, you can't go back there, okay? You can't go back there. I ride a horse back there, it'd be taking your life in your hands, okay? That being said, is this the right housing for the elderly? What this also does is that it hurts our elderly population. More important is that it hurts them, because what's going to happen now is that the next developer's going to look at the project in town and saying, there's too much elderly housing in town. Why should we build a mixed elderly housing? Where it should be, which is in the middle of the town, downtown, not a mile away in the middle of a swamp, but someplace else. And I made that recommendation here. It's all about the money, okay? Our town is never going to be able to get out of this unless we face the reality, and that is, how do we generate revenue? And the only way we can get revenue is we need to develop commercial and residential space downtown Sherburne. That's the only way. It's not going to happen in the long term, that's the only way it's going to happen. I'm a, I'm a direct butter to this property, so I have that, two minutes and 10 seconds, okay? So answering your question, John, if you buy a condominium and you have 100 acres and you put 100 condominiums on it, that, it's all portioned to them equally, the land. The best thing they can do is have it on the conservation land, so it's out of the tax realm. That's, that's why Pulte had to answer that question, how he was hedging. The other thing, if you notice, is that they went to the Council of Asia and said, we're going to raise $762,000. And they were firm on that price. Now, well, we don't know what the prices will be. Maybe it'll be 500, maybe it'll be 800, whatever the market will bear. So now we're not hearing all the big money that's coming into the town, okay? And the other issue here is, is one issue, is one that Robin made. Robin, if you call up the Department of Housing, or if you call up legal aid, they will tell you, you cannot keep a caregiver's kid from coming in to take care of somebody who's in that property. You cannot do that. So the big revenue that this is going to break to the town is just the opposite. It's going to end up costing the town a lot more money. And that's the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzie Weal, right, Hunting Lane.
Just, so, a comment that probably ought to be clarified, that the EA zone is elder and/or affordable. It doesn't have to be both in every instance, just as a clarification.
Yeah, the standard, the standard in the REG is reasonably priced. Michael pointed that out in his comments, the question that I had. The 2008 amendment does deal with low and moderate income housing, but it's the alternative. It's either elderly or affordable. But it, the standard in the REG itself is reasonably priced. That's the standard that we're looking at.
Excellent.
So, Suzie.
Suzie Weal, right, Hunting Lane. I, I think that your job as a committee is to decide if this is the right project for Sherburne, based on the EA zone. This is not downsizing. This is Pulte Homes selling something which is what they sell all over the place. If you look at the Sunday paper, you can find it anywhere in any community. I think, I'd like to repeat something that I think came up at a different meeting, not yours, and that is that because this is not downsizing for our seniors, who would do better off to stay in, in their own homes, which are reasonably priced and whose taxes they know, it, it is going to be people from outside, and I worry very much that those people will not value what makes this the special community that it is, and that is our schools and our open space. I think they will vote their own special interest, and Sherburne will become gradually slipping away and not, not being the town that all of us came to live. So I ask you to do your duty and keep foremost in your mind if this is the best project for Sherburne, because that's why we have a planning board, that's why we have this zoning. Without having a zone is so that you will consider each and every instance as a separate instance, and I ask you to consider very carefully.
Thank you. Chris, I think you're the last one. Sorry, could you identify yourself?
Chris Cooley, Maple, 55 Maple Street. I would, I was going to say a lot of what Suzie just said, but I would just say in addition that I know we, we feel there's, you know, obviously, there are going to be more and more elderly, but it seems that the group right now, well, I, I wish we knew really how many people are interested, how many Sherburne people are interested, because as Suzie said, I mean, I think this is something you should be evaluating for, what benefit it'd be to senior, not just to seniors, but to the town as a whole. And I just think, you know, we should keep in mind that we have all these units being built, or supposedly to be built on, at Whitney Farms. Forty, what is it, 43, 48 units?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Just last year at town meeting, we approved a project for 18 over 55 units. Now, I know we may need more, but do we need 66 units in addition to those? I think that's, that's just an awful lot at one time, and I just, you know, just because we may need another project, and by the way, I heard someone mention about downtown and the, the property on Main Street with the blue tarp that we all know and love, and I, I happened to call the number there today, and it's for sale, and it's six, it's over six acres, it's right near town. I don't know why that couldn't be developed by someone into six times four is 24, maybe not that many, not that concentrated, could put it away from the road, quiet, accessible to downtown, so you could put another 20, 20 units there, much better than this project. Thank you.
Do you want to respond?
Just a point of information, he can't get more than two house slots on that land because of its physical characteristics. That's why he wants to sell it. I mean, just, I, I agree with you, it's a perfect, perfect location, but as I understand it, because I've been party to a lot of conversations, it's not terribly buildable. It's a lot of wet.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing is, just a clarification of...
With less high.
That Whitney Farms is not age-restricted in any way. It's actually oriented towards, I think, families. Last one, and then...
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Doug Brody, Kerr Street. I just want to cut through some of the rhetoric tonight and just point out what I think are basic facts about this development. Number one, it's a senior development, not a nursing home, and it's going to not have children. There won't be a 40B there, there could be, but there won't be. It will be a senior development. Secondly, it preserves open space, there are 90 acres, 60% of which will be undeveloped. Single-family homes, we'd eat up much of that open land, and it preserves the trails as public trails. With single-family homes, there would be no such public trails available to the public. It's in the middle of town, not on the edge, such as Whitney Street or Sherburne Meadows, which emphasizes that it is in a safe location in town. The Sherburne police are exceptional, and they are constantly patrolling. Fourth, it is, as to the distance from the center of the town of one mile, I recall that Sherburne Meadows was rezoned for this, for purposes of, of house, elderly housing, and it is two miles away from town, and we didn't have much carping about the distance at that time. By, the town also, as been said, the revenue that will come from this project is estimated at $760,000 when completed and sold. That is net of cost for police and fire protection. And without more revenue, the town services and schools especially will suffer, and the value of all real estate insurance will be adversely affected, as has been graphically illustrated by SOS. The argument is made that after, that if the town grants a variance on this project, they are more apt to do it again. This is a difficult argument for me to accept. Our zoning is not a row of dominoes ready to fall with the first one going down. It will be, always be a high bar to overcome, as is evident from this process tonight. And as to the swamp, that's why we have a Conservation Commission. As a resident of Sherburne for almost 50 years, and as a, as a senior who would like to stay in Sherburne, a town that I have been very involved in, I ask that you carefully look at this project and support the rezoning that will make it possible for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. I, I really appreciate the input, and I'll turn it back to the board. I've got a couple of, well, I've mentioned several, several things that I'd like to see documented more specifically, and I'd like to, I'd like you to come back again with those doc, with that documented. I don't, I think the, it's, it could be in the form of one development contract, or it could be amendment to the relevant thesis. And are there other comments from the board?
I just have the same concern that I stated before. And I've reread this now twice in that time, and I believe it supports the fact that we would be irresponsible to vote with item number eight on that plan.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I share Eric's view that, that $66,000, I think, it, it makes me, as a voter at town meeting, less likely to support it. I find it to be laughable, maybe a little strong, but it's just, I would prefer to see it be a TBD, to be negotiated. And I understand that there's timing issues, but the $66,000 doesn't cut it.
I'd be to remove that note from the plans.
I actually chuck what I was going to suggest, it would help, but I would like to see the word "minimum" in front of 66. I mean, mine just stays in there, but the fact is the absolute number. I've reread, I know John has concerns, but as... I've reread. I know John has concerns, but it says right here, "The planning board in this report shall include an opinion whether proponent has sufficient data to reasonably show the development will conform to this plan, and any other material the proponent has submitted with the proposal." I like a reference of mitigation in there. I don't even care if this is the mouth like that, but I think it should say at minimum, 'cause it locks it in as it is there. And there's further language in here, I believe that supports that as well, which I can discuss as well. But I know we spent at length talking about kids and how long to live there, and if they live there, it'd be the summer, and whatever else it is, and that seems less relevant to this absolute number that's in item eight. And I do like a reference, though, in the plan. I think it's something that's key within this, and I think it connects it to the intent of an EA, which is also development of a downtown as well. I guess, so to summarize it, I just simply wanna see, and maybe you can say if you want something different, the word minimum before the dollar.
I'd prefer to see minimum of 1.5 million.
That gives latitude for negotiation later. It can be at equal, it can be staged, as a development is developing portions, or whatever else. All those details can be worked out. It's not my intention to work that out here. I don't want it silent. I'd like some in there, and just simply a minimum.
That makes sense. And the, well, so you've heard that comment. I guess I'd like to, I'd like to see those in writing. And then I, and then I, if you, I'd like to continue this hearing till next Wednesday night and see if we can finish it, just 'cause I think we, I don't, I'm uncomfortable closing this now, and I'll let my fellow board members comment, but I'm uncomfortable closing it without seeing it in writing. And if, one other comment is that whatever we do decide, it's permissible to change the preliminary development plan between the time of the close of this hearing and the town meeting. So, there are changes that can be made, including at town meeting. But I'd like to see, before we close this hearing, I'd like to see those things in writing. Any other comment from the board?
I very much agree with you.
Is Mark clear on exactly what's expected there?
I believe so. I've been taking notes all, all night, so I think I wrote down the important items that you brought up.
Good. Well, with that, then, I'll take a, do we need to vote, or just...
Vote to continue.
We need to vote to continue. So, I'll take a motion to continue this hearing until next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, here.
I'll move.
Is there a second? Second, any further discussion?
Just one note. Again, there may be an issue with location, so maybe the motion should be, it would be in this room, unless otherwise noted, it will be in police station. Or some location.
So, with that amendment, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? All right. So, to be clear to everybody, this meeting, this hearing will continue till next Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, but please check the town calendar and see the location, because it may be different. We haven't booked the room yet, so... And thank you, everybody. Let me take a 60-second recess, so people that don't wanna stay for the rest of our scintillating meeting can exit.
You earn points if you stay.
Oh, do I?
Yeah.
Okay. If I say close, you're just...
All right. Thank you, everybody. We're back from our recess and we'll resume our agenda. Gino, next on our agenda is the A and R for eighteen Prospect Street. And you've described it as a strip of land being carved off as property in order to convey it to the abutting.
Yes. It's pretty simple. This parcel is being carved off this lot and given to this lot. So both of them do retain all requirements of zoning. So no frontage is changed.
By the way, Gino, if you're going to speak, I think we've got to figure out the microphone.
Here you go. Okay. Am I picked it up?
We're going to finish the meeting.
Do you know why they want to use it?
I think, I can't remember, they didn't tell me. I think, well, it just says it's going to be conveyed. I think the well is okay. I don't know if they're putting in a new septic or, I don't know.
It doesn't, it's not our concern.
No, legally, but nothing yet.
Yeah. So, Gino, run it back again. So we're on Prospect Street, north, is it the northern lot that's, that's, I guess it's the eastern lot. Eastern lot that's conveying a piece or is it the other way around? What's the one?
Two B is, is being conveyed to Lot One.
Okay. Two B two is being conveyed to Lot, two B one.
Correct.
And are they, they both will be forming lots after the?
Yes, they will.
So.
Frontage doesn't change. Area is they have more than enough area.
Is this, this is our B zoning, two acre?
Yeah.
I think it's RV.
Oh, yeah, Prospect Street, of course. It's RV. It's definitely RV.
Okay. So it is RV and the frontage is not changing. And the easterly lot will be 2.01 acres?
Yes, 2.01 now.
Well, it's pointing to this lot.
Yeah, the new, the new lot.
It'll be 2.5 according to Note Number Five.
What's that, Eric?
According to Note Number Five, it'll be 2.5 acres. A little bit of 2.5.
Parcel two B two to be conveyed to the owner of Lot One.
Yeah, it's the other way around. It's Lot, it's going to Lot One.
Now, now it makes more sense.
So it's 2.01, but it's Lot One now is 2.01 already.
Correct.
It's going to increase by, yeah. And this one is over three, this left is over three, so.
Okay, so Lot two B one, which is the western parcel, will, will end up at 3.16 acres? Right.
And it'll be 2.5 after the conveyance.
And it retains Lot with requirements all the way through. We had, we've had discussions about that requirement. Across the driveway.
I guess my next question is, even though Note Number Five is there, which is good, and then conveys it over, is that enough to convey to Number One? Or do we, now in the past, we actually had these, we required notes to say parcel two B two, not a buildable lot. We still require that or is that not necessary, Note Number Five? We've had those discussions in the past.
Right. Well, I mean, we could have required that. It's, I, I think in a case like this where it's so obvious, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the requirements for a building lot, it doesn't mean area, it doesn't have any frontage at all, so the only purpose of it, the only thing that can be done with it is be conveyed to the abutting lot.
So it meets the requirements of the ANR statute, Gino, by the way?
Yes, it does. And it meets all, all our regulations. The information we require to be on the plan is all on the plan.
Hey, we don't have an angle problem with the.
That's what I was saying. They demonstrated.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, pass this unanimously.
It's not ready here and I'll move over.
You up there?
You know, some point in our future, we probably ought to once a year just review the, the meeting laws. There is a, actually, while, while it's, we're going through the signing process, there is a ethics, the state has an ethics test, and it's for education purposes. And it's, I think, there may be something, Gino, maybe it's just for employees, but I think it should be for board and committees.
It is.
But I think, don't you have to redo it every?
Yes. I think it's every two years.
Yeah, so we ought to, just to comply. Yeah, yeah, also, no, I just think those are, that type of things. Yeah, yeah. Gino, this is all said. All right. So if we've completed that, then next on our, we really got to keep, because, you know, we really got to keep this to one conversation and we're still progressing through our agenda here. So the housing production plan, so, Gino, there's been discussion about that. I can't remember how much we discussed at our last meeting. We talked about it at our last meeting, that there are well over a hundred plans that are registered with the state, there are six that are, that are currently active and likely that will be whittled down to three. But in Sherburne has discussed the, an affordable housing plan in the community development plan of 2008, did I take it, 2004?
2004.
2004. And that, that's a sort of a good primer. It's a little bit out of date, but it's, the concepts are the same. And the concepts are if, so I'm really repeating what we discussed in our last meeting, saying that for Sherburne, we'd have to find about eight units a year to actually build that would be affordable, and they would have to be affordable according to the state requirements, which means there's a lottery on how they're occupied and, and that sort of thing. So the process means getting land and getting it developed and, and built. So that's an onerous, difficult task. It's not clear where those would go. And we have to build, we'd have to build about a hundred. We'd have to build eight a year just to qualify to have a plan that will allow the zoning board to have more control over a 40B application.
Yes, that's right.
Oh, we need to straighten up that line.
And I think, I think, John, along those lines, just a few days ago, I was adding up the numbers. It looks like about one-third of the communities in Massachusetts have a plan. But you referenced five, I think it's down to six. You referenced six. I think it's down to five already. I think one of them already lost their certification. It didn't, it wasn't renewed. And of those five, two are scheduled unless they obtain further certification are due to expire in the summer. So they'll be down to three. You have some, some developments on that end, so.
I guess I think this, just to go further on this, I think really it ought to be part of the update of the, of the master plan, the general plan, where we break it into, one of the groups is supposed to talk about this stuff, including the town center, and it seems like that's the, that's the place to continue this.
And certainly, adding some affordable units to housing that could be created in the town center would be a very sound idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd agree with that. So to me, the way for the planning board at this point to progress on this, whether it's updating the community development plan or, or looking at the master plan or the general plan, it seems like what the planning board ought to be doing is let's, let's aggressively recruit those three groups to get the general plan rewrite or update going. And get those groups recruited and appointed. There'll be, they will be subcommittees. And, and make, make this part of their, of that town center focused, one of the three subgroups, to focus, to include this on there in general.
I'm sorry, to include this housing production plan or not?
To include this issue of a housing production plan in the general plan update.
Which seems like it should be very simple because it doesn't appear to work for any community, so I don't, we needn't waste a lot of time addressing it.
Yeah, there's two ways to look at this, and this is why I think the subcommittee ought to do that. One is if the goal is to create an affordable housing plan that allows our zoning board, that allows eight units per year to get developed, which allows our zoning board to then have much greater control over a 40B application. That's one. The other is just saying, we think it's a good idea. We think having affordable housing, whether we ever reach that goal or, or of trying to prevent a 40B because we've, we've reached 10% housing. That's a, if we say, okay, one is to try to prevent that, the other is, we just think affordable housing is a good idea, and, and we ought to work towards adding more affordable housing, then that's a different goal.
Do you know?
I think it is, and I think that it's an expressed goal in our current master plan, and I would certainly support that being a continued goal. I think if there are, ever opportunities to, to build the affordable housing, I have affordable housing built. I mean, I think that that's, that's certainly appropriate for our community, and I think we would benefit from that. So it's in the, it's in the plan, and I support, support it in that respect. There was some suggestion at one point, there were some discussions, I know of a lot that was over towards the western side to Frampton and by the prison, I think. And I'm not sure whatever happened to that, but if it comes to our attention that there might be a suitable place, it's never easy, but if there are a suitable place, I think that, that would be something that we could bring forward and support and maybe add to our affordable housing stock.
You know, it occurs to me that it might be a good idea to invite someone who was intimately involved with creating Leland Farms to come and talk with the board and explain some of the, what happened, the procedures, the issues.
I think Cory Lincoln was very intimately involved with that.
Yeah, it would be good to learn from the past.
And to reinforce what John was just saying, the 1975 master plan.
Yes.
Encouraged the development of a housing authority and was a statement in favor of developing more elderly housing and affordable housing, so it's something, I think it's been a focus and goal of the town for quite a while.
Yep. It talked about more diversity of housing.
Right.
Which is a very nice way of looking at it. And I thought it was very balanced because at the same time that they were trying to preserve the open space and the green loveliness of Sherburne by having conservation purchases, bonding purchases, they were talking about housing diversity. It was not an either or, it was both.
Well, I guess the question is, do we, the planning board, want to pursue a housing production plan, or do we want to task either a, a housing committee or task the built environment? Of the, of the general plan update, there's three groups, land use, built environment, and fiscal and economic. Those are three different groups. And, and I guess, I was suggesting, let's task the built environment subcommittee, let's populate it, and task them to address this. If it's, if that's too big a task, then maybe it is.
I think one of my concerns is that, is there a way that they can give a, call a conceptual look at it or a feasibility look at it? Because I think, was it John or Rob, and someone brought up earlier here that it was, you know, tried and failed by scores of communities and went down to so few that have done it. So I don't want to be a naysayer and say, oh, and then wash our hands of it, but should it be an initial feasibility look at it? If that may be that, what you're talking about, that ask, instead of getting to detail and doing a crazy analysis for hours and hours, whatever else, may spend some kind of, again, a feasibility assessment of it.
Yeah, again, of which? Of, of a plan that will enable prevention of a 40B project?
Just build a house.
Or is that one goal? Which case, I'm sort of of the mind, I think we all are, that, that if there's only going to be three left by summer, it's probably not a very feasible goal. But the other, the other suggestion is, we should, we, we should look at the community development plan in 2004 and try to maybe reinvigorate that to see what we can do as a community to add affordable housing, just because it's the right thing to do.
I guess in a perfect world, I'd, I'd like to have these plans that people work on for years not gather dust. That oh four plan, has anyone looked at it since the committees stopped meeting and put it together?
It's good reading. I mean, I, to me, it's already a resource because in order for me to spout off the little I have, it provided good information. And why didn't we pursue it? I think it was because it was easy not to. So if we, the town, say that the goal is to try to block a 40B, I think we can investigate that pretty quickly, maybe pursue it, so we could, we could, that's, that's one goal. The other is to say it's just the right thing to do, which is really where the community development plan left off. But I think if we update it with the general plan, and there is a proposal at the, at the state level to say, you've got to have a master plan and you've got to follow it. Right now, it says we've got to have it, but it doesn't say we have to follow it. So if the state does say, you know, towns need a master plan and they've got to follow it, then if our master plan says, we've got to do some zoning, we've got to do some things to, to enable or facilitate the development of affordable housing, then we're, then we're, we've got to move in that direction. But an affordable housing plan doesn't mean we have to create eight units if we're not trying to block a 40B. It just says, hey, let's, let's, when we have the opportunity, let's make these changes to enable the type of development likely in the town center, but John just suggested another location where housing, a different type of housing could be built.
But I, I don't always want it to be by the prison or in the outskirts. I'd like to see it start being incorporated and not always these.
I agree.
It's not right and it's not.
There was once a dream of scattering it through the town as being the most desirable way of doing it, in small units. The money, the finances of it is very difficult because the price of land is so high, which is why when, years ago, we thought about it, we thought about town land, or maybe even getting some of the prison land from the state, or just almost anything, just so that your costs were basically construction rather than land and construction. Because you have to have a well and, that's why I thought talking with Cory might be interesting because she could enumerate the issues and sort of clarify our thinking.
Well, let's, let's, then let's do that. Let's invite Cory to.
List the, the process.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Just a little bit of background in terms of the plan sitting on the shelf. Remember, there was a, the 1975 master plan promoted affordable housing. Woodhaven got built as a result of that.
Yes, right.
Then, and then there's another study, and Leland Farms got, got built based on that. So they have been, there has been follow.
Leland Farms got built. Well, never mind.
There has been follow-up, and it's, it's time to move forward again.
Yeah, I was not in town at the time, but my assumption is the EA zoning 5.6, which was passed in 79, I would guess is an outgrowth of the 75 master plan. I guess with a couple of year delay in it, but.
Yeah, it was, at least it was, it was done with Woodhaven in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Well, so next action is to invite someone with the experience of Leland Farm to talk about that process. I guess also I'd suggest as homework, take a look at the community development plan discussion because it's pretty good. It's well done.
And, and the other thing was that community development plan focused on 59 North Main Street, that property, and it had, it did a very detailed analysis, including a pro forma study of a 36 unit.
That's right.
I think it was age restricted, I'm not 100% sure, but it was affordable. And, you know, it involved selling the tax credits to a private developer, it was community builders was, was the potential developer of that. And I think they did the feasibility study, but the landowner at the time was not responsive to any inquiries about purchasing the lands, and it kind of died, died at that. Probably would have died anyway, subsequently finding out that it's, the land is.
Gino, there was also community or regional housing, including the discussion about Medfield State Hospital.
Right, that's right.
In 2004, there was discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't know how that was.
Well, the community development plan was funded by the state. They were giving $30,000 to every community, and because Medfield was, Medfield State Hospital was looked at as a regional facility, Dover and Sherburne were asked to contribute part of their $30,000 to go toward that, the study of that hospital. And, you know, $5,000 from Dover went there and $2,000 from Sherburne, and so that's, that, it took the regional look.
Okay. So we've invested in their.
That's a lot of institutional memory, Gino. You're wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's take that step and then I think, so, so we'll invite Cory or someone from the Leland Farm project. We'll take a look at the community development plan and then.
Or anybody else that is interested. If for a home audience that might be interested and has some knowledge.
Absolutely.
We're certainly invited and we welcome any input from interested and enthusiastic residents.
Well said, well said. So, and, and as long as we're inviting the three in the general plan update, we're recruiting people for land use, subcommittee that'll specialize, that'll look at land use, open space and recreation, natural and cultural resources. The second committee is built environment, which will look at the town center, housing and circulation. And the third subcommittee is fiscal and economic, which will look at the economic development, public facilities and services. So we want to, we want to populate each of those subcommittees with, with 15 or 20 or so folks to meet this year and update the existing general plan, which is available on the website, on our town website. You can take a look at it, and it describes the process. So, yeah, we certainly invite other people. If we want to schedule a particular time, we have a meeting coming up, it's very short, it's next week. I don't think we can do that. Otherwise, it's probably going to be, we need a calendar, but our next regular meeting would be April.
Twenty-third. After the ninth would be the 23rd, right?
Twenty-third. So there's the ninth and the 23rd. Do we want to pick a meeting to target or to talk about this?
What is the date of next Wednesday?
I won't be here on the ninth, but.
Does it make sense to be when you're here?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Okay, good. April 23rd, regular Wednesday meeting. Check the town calendar. But we'll plan on talking about this at the April 23rd meeting.
What is the date of the next Wednesday, please?
The second.
Thank you.
Town meeting. So next on our agenda, town meeting presentation. And Eric, are you still game to present the warrant article on, on floodplain?
Sure, I can do that one.
Okay.
I might be able to light also if you wanted to.
I did slap together some PowerPoints and didn't use them at advisory, so I'll forward them to you if you'd like.
Sure.
All I did was cut and paste images of the floodplain map, so we ought to test them out. When Pat's not looking, we'll see how they project.
Do you mind giving me a quick summary of how the votes ended up for the planning board stuff on the advisory?
In advisory?
Yeah.
All, all three warrant articles passed unanimously.
All three were eight. There was one member not present, so it was an eight-person vote, and all three passed eight, zero.
There was comment again about the fact that people who are in the floodplain area need to be notified. That came up at the meeting, so let's make sure it happens.
Right. And a comment was made on the lighting article. Right. And a comment was made on the lighting article, which was it would be nice to add some kind of measurement to make it easier for the building inspector to deal with. But it passed. Everyone acknowledged it would be nice to have lighting.
A couple of the selectmen said that they would push for an objective standard, and that may be the ultimate goal. But it was very interesting. A number of the advisory committee members, in my opinion, were more, or just as comfortable with a subjective standard. Not that moving to an objective standard isn't a worthy goal, but particularly for some of the things we were talking about, it's pretty hard to come up with. Where you have ambient lighting that's projecting upwards. You know, lumens at the lot line become tougher, as we've talked about.
It was clear that everyone thought it was a topic that should be included.
Right, that's right.
John, what's the date of town meeting again?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-ninth, Tuesday. I'll let you know in case I have a conflict.
Okay, good. Hey, well, yeah, I'll get to it. Okay, so anybody have, anybody else want to present at one of the warrant articles at town meeting?
I'm already presenting another warrant article, so.
What else is there?
There's lighting and there's.
Medical marijuana is the third one. I think I'm better off doing lighting rather than floodplating. I can speak light better.
Either you can choose, if you're raising your hand, you get to pick. I'll present whatever.
I was more comfortable in advisory doing lighting, to be honest with you.
You've got lighting, I'll do floodplain. No one else wants to do medical marijuana or floodplain?
I'll do one of them. Do you don't mind?
I don't mind. If you want to back us all up, I always appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll back you up on any of them, but I could also do one if you want.
All right. It's up to you, Gene. I think it's good to have a resident of Sherburne present, but I also think it's good to have somebody who knows what he's talking about.
Does floodplain make the most sense since that's a pretty technical?
I'll do that one.
All right.
No, I'm just, it's a question.
Gene's coached me, so I think it's better to have the teacher. Chuck, no more comments from you. Shut off that mic.
There's nothing wrong with having a prepared presentation of a couple of paragraphs.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, so, Gino, I'm, that's great if you're volunteering, that's fine. So floodplain, and then I'll do medical marijuana. I think the board's discussed all of them well, so I'm comfortable with any of them.
Can I ask a town meeting question? I think it came up today. It's relevant. But what does a four-four split mean? Because someone brought up means that doesn't mean approved or it does, and I just, it's kind of relevant to something where.
They're going to talk about it some more, actually. Advisory's going to talk about it some more. So I don't have a conclusion. I think you can look at it different ways.
They're planning to have two opinions in advisory report.
Right, but they're going to chew on how they do that and what's the conclusion.
Town council.
Yeah, town councils.
Because you have to vote on if you stick to the advisory opinion first and then.
Yeah, that's why they need to.
So they're going to, so stay tuned. Let's move on. Master plan survey. If I had managed to keep us on actual time of the agenda here, they would have been completed by about 11 o'clock tonight. But instead, they will be completed, we have a handful left. Volunteers have done, showed up again, did a great job. We've got a few more in. We've officially closed it. We're not taking any more surveys, so folks, if you haven't handed in your survey, look for the next one. But we're done accepting more surveys. They're really, it's like the census, there's only, I think, Gene, what, we got three or something? The last handful is three more, so it's dwindled down, so we're not really getting any more anyway. But we've decided that's it. We're going to close it so we can begin the analysis. The analysis formatting is being done as we speak. I've seen a draft of it. We haven't populated with actual real data until we finish entering, which will be, I think I promised our survey wizard tomorrow morning by 10:30.
I'm assuming that a bulk of the time compiling this is on the narrative sections. When we did a survey at St. Teresa, parishioners, same thing, multiple choice, but then there were narratives. And that's what really took a lot of time to compile and to analyze.
That's right. The cross-tabulation is, you have to do a few additions of it or renditions.
And unlike the last survey, this one actually had long narrative sections for people to express opinions on complicated topics.
I will say, the volunteers who have been entering the data haven't entered all the comments with the exception of a few expletives. This is really good. But in any case, the survey data is, it will be completed tomorrow morning. And so at our next meeting, it takes time to do the data analysis to get something to you. So it'll take, I don't want to commit our volunteer who's doing that, but it probably will be, you might see it maybe the April meeting or the second April meeting will have something to look at. And then begin, as Chuck says, begin the commenting. We might want to look at a different cross-tabulation, that sort of thing. Town center report, I don't have it, I haven't done anything new, nothing new there, okay. Other business. On other business, I just wanted to mention that the Council of Aging has a meeting where they want to talk about, they're going to introduce or discuss the development project on April 7th. And they're looking for someone who can attend from the planning board. And I had agreed to do it, but when the meeting was going to be on a different day, and now I'm out of town on the 7th. So is there someone else who could attend the, it's a 7:00 PM meeting in the Council of Aging on April 7th?
What day of the week is it?
Monday.
A Wednesday?
Monday.
Monday.
At the community center.
At the community center.
Oh, I know, of course I know what it is. What did they want?
I just asked if someone from the planning board could say a few words.
Out of a panel.
I will probably be there anyway, but I'm not sure I'm the right person to do that.
Well, I can ask Karen for a better description, send an email out.
Okay.
So I'll send it to everybody, and if someone can do that, raise your hand. I just think it's great, it's a great, when I've gone to Council of Aging meetings, it's, there's always good discussion and I get lots of insight on a lot of things. So it's, whenever the planning board can get out in front of a group like that, I think it's a great idea. So I'll send an email out with a better.
I don't want to volunteer if somebody else can do it, but I have to look at my calendar, which I don't have with me, but I'm happy to do it, particularly if Grace is going to be there to actually do a good job.
Great, okay. And, Gino, any other business or anyone else, any other business? No.
Just that I got the final, I finally got last week, the final report from, the draft final from Charles River Water Association.
Oh, my goodness.
Just a summary memo is all it really is in that there. And I've emailed the group and just trying to arrange a meeting.
Great. Great. If, I know that thing, that doodle.com wasn't very successful, but if you want me to do it, I'll happy to do it.
I sent an email out saying, like, here's my thoughts and it changed my mind. What are your thoughts? And I mean, I sent it out like this morning. I'm in her back.
Great, hey, good, excellent, thank you, good news. Well, on that then, I will take a motion to adjourn this meeting. I'd like to thank everybody for really good discussion. I thought this was a very useful meeting. And I'd like to thank our viewing audience and our attendance stayed, so Ted, thank you.
You get the gold star.
I've set up multiple meetings. Nothing would make me happy. It'd be a great outcome out of this entire recent thing if there was more public involvement, more knowledgeable and, you know, and something like that. Any additional involvement is great, it really is. When people, things affect them, people get a bigger picture of things and start to understand and become more aware. And I hope that happens.
Yeah, well said. So a motion to adjourn the meeting. They're going to be here all night. They can't get someone to second.
Keep going, keep going.
All right. And just to be clear, the hearing has been continued to April 2nd, Wednesday, 7:00 PM. And look in the calendar to see what wrote.
It'll be here unless otherwise noted.
All right, thank you.
That's what you voted for.
So all those in favor of adjournment? The meeting is concluded. Thank you, everybody.